Councilmember Willis.
Present.
Councilmember Gilliard.
Here.
Councilmember Reeves.
Accountant for.
Councilmember Colley. Councilmember Colley. Councilmember Baker.
Present.
Also present is City Manager, Mr. Donald, City Attorney, Emilio Walker, and Mayor Edwards. You have a call.
Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, would you call the first item?
The first item is council discussion on Parks Master Plan. City Manager.
Yeah. Mayor. Oh, we're gonna, are we gonna approve the agenda?
You don't have to approve the agenda.
That don't work since.
Can I, can I go ahead and make move to remove something, Mayor? Or would you like for me to wait until we come to that topic?
Madam Clerk, I think I can let her do that. She wants to remove something from the agenda.
Okay.
I'm removing the Waste Management Discussion with a specific ask to the City Manager on Public Works. There are two legislations that was on hold. One was brought before this council by Gilliard in Row, not Row, and Councilmember Jackson, and one was brought before council by me. The difference was they had zones. And so I want to ask the City Manager and Public Works to bring back, bring forth a presentation on the pros and cons. And then I'm going to get with Councilmember Reed, so that he and I can meet with staff around this issue, so we can have a more comprehensive discussion.
Okay.
Councilmember Willis, will we be able to bring that back at the next scheduled work session?
Let's do it at the next regular work session. Therefore, that gives Councilmember Reeves an opportunity to meet with staff. You and you have to bring back the, the actual information. Is that, would that work for you, Councilmember Reeves?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Councilmember Willis. Madam Clerk, are we ready for the Parks Master Plan?
Yes, sir.
So Mayor, we actually have Perez planning here to provide insights on their actions related to the Parks Master Plan. I think the council will be very impressed with the depth of work that they're doing. Before they fully dive into the public engagement portion, they are kind of sharing the existing conditions assessment that they've done, as well as a needs assessment summary. And so we're going to ask them to abide by the time limits that the mayor provides, but they have a total of 61 slides. So it is a lot of slides and it's a lot of information. And so we would just ask that questions be held until the end. And that also for Perez's planning, you know, some of the less informative slides, if you could, you know, be expeditious as you review those, as there's normally, I believe, a 10-minute time minute followed by a question and answer. It looks like it'll take you guys slightly longer than that, but if you pay attention to that time limit, it would be very helpful for us.
Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, we're happy to go through these slides and try to stay on that timeframe. Great. Well, good afternoon again, Mayor, councilmembers, City Manager. We appreciate the opportunity to share these findings with you, which provides a summary of the findings that we've completed to date on this Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So very briefly, what we'd like to do is provide an overview of the process, key summary findings, and then open it up for any questions and answers. So let's, let's dive right in based on these, this timeframe. So you've seen, many of you have seen this slide before. This is our process, five-step process. And right now, we're wrapping up phases one and two, context analysis and needs and priorities assessment. So this gives us findings to date, and then the next step is to develop a long-range vision and then therefore recommendations. If you go to the next slide, as you may recall, this is the process that we use for the needs assessment findings. So we use a variety of different techniques, qualitative, observational, and quantitative. And then the findings from these three then suggest what the needs and priorities are. The next slide. And so what we've enjoyed is that through this process, we've really been able to speak to a lot of your residents. Through all these different techniques, we've been able to speak to over 1,300 residents, which has been really great, considering all the different techniques that we've used, both pre-COVID as well, as well as during COVID. So if we go to the next slide, these are the six big ideas that we've identified to date, right? The idea, the need to continue to position parks and recreation as essential service, the need to upgrade parks, the need to ensure equitable access, enhance marketing and communications, the need to customize facilities, and then lastly maximize resource generation allocation. So what I'd like to do is dive one, go through this one by one and share the findings of how we got to these six big ideas. Next slide is continually position parks as essential services. And what's interesting to us is that if we look at the beginning of the park movement in the United States, as you can see in the next slide, it was based on or informed by various pandemics and epidemics that occurred at the time. And so the next slide shows how parks were essentially at the time considered an antidote to these challenges. And in fact, there were many innovations that occurred during this time, during these pandemics, that we are still seeing the benefits of today. So if you go to the next slide, one of those was the neighborhood center that came up, that was derived during that time. And it was essentially a building where residents could go to, to receive all the different essential services that they needed at the time. Everything from recreation to nurse care to food, to workforce development, et cetera. And if you go to the next slide, what's been exciting for us is that, that's exactly how Parks and Recreation has responded to the pandemic during these times. You could almost say that it's in connection or direct legacy of that, of the urban park movement that started in the late 1800s and the early 1900s. So the Parks Department has done that by providing food and even testing locations during COVID. Next slide, please. And so when we asked respondents of the virtual public meetings if they, how the value had parks had increased during this time, we saw that 75% of those respondents said value had increased or somewhat increased. And asked how they would like the city to respond to funding, 92% of respondents said they'd like to see increased funding for Parks and Recreation. Next slide. But we believe there's other opportunities to help with the, some other socioeconomic and environmental challenges that the city is facing. As you see from the slide, 73% of respondents mentioned that community safety and crime are important to their household, and 50% said economic development is important to their household. So we believe that in the next steps, as we develop the long-range vision and provide recommendations, there's an opportunity to use the Parks and Recreation Department as a way to help with some of these issues. And in addition to this, the department has really pivoted in a really impressive way to continue to provide essential services to the community through the pandemic, through virtual programming. And you can see the variety of programs that they've offered and the results of doing so and sharing this through Instagram and Facebook. So truly an impressive strategy and response that the DPR, the department has done during the pandemic. So the next big point was upgrading existing parks and recreation facilities, and we saw this in many ways. If you go to the next slide, in the statistically valid survey, when we asked residents what was keeping them from using parks and recreation facilities, these were the top three. And it really speaks to an improvement overall of the parks and recreation facilities. We go to the next slide. And we also saw this when we visited the parks with staff and evaluated them. This is the most subjective part of the process, but that's the reason we do it as a group, right? Is we collectively evaluate the parks. So what you're seeing here is the green squares are actually, or the green shapes are actually the parks themselves, and the circles with different colors are the evaluation of those parks. So you're seeing a lot of oranges and reds and yellows, which means that the parks are on the lower spectrum of our metrics, suggesting that there is a need to improve the parks. We go to the next slide. And as we were evaluating the parks, these were some of the big ideas that emerged, right? A lot of the parks are tucked into heavily wooded areas, so visibility can be a challenge. Overall, there just needs to be an overall improvement in the curb appeal and the presence of the park. There's an opportunity to rebrand the parks and make them much more colorful, consistent with the city's logos or rebranding, and then providing a variety of things to do in those parks based on needs of residents. And as we're doing all these changes, looking at ways to enhance the efficiency of operations and management to therefore reduce maintenance costs in the long run. When we asked residents what actions they'd be supportive of in terms of improving the park system, you can see that many of them were very supportive or somewhat supportive of enhancing outdoor and indoor facilities. In fact, a high percentage of them said that. So again, letting us know that there is a need to improve the parks. Next slide. And when we asked residents how they would allocate $100, we can see that almost 40 of those dollars went to improving the park system. Again, letting us know that there's a need to improve it. Next slide. And, and this is attached to, park quality is very much attached to economic development. So through park quality, we believe that we can help address some of the concerns that residents mentioned of economic development, as this slide shows of the economic impact that a park can have in the surrounding area, and that is a well-maintained park. If it's not maintained, the data suggests that the impact on property values and economic development can also go the other way. It can be a negative impact. So again, showing the importance of maintaining and having a good park quality. Next slide. We're about halfway through and we have two minutes, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to move forward. There's also the need to ensure equitable access. So if we go to the next series of slides, you'll see there's gaps in the city. The areas in orange are where residents have access to a park within anywhere from half a mile to a mile. So you see a lot of areas in white, suggesting that there is a need for more equitable access to parkland. If you go to the next slide, you see the same, a similar image for community centers. We can see the southern portion of the city doesn't have access to community centers within one to five miles. If you go to the next slide, same thing with gyms. You see some areas in the southern part don't have access to gyms. Next slide, similar with the art center. Again, areas that don't have access to, to these facilities. And if you go to the next slide, you can see how the city of South Fulton compares to other communities across the country. And these are communities that have a similar demographic, population, and population density. And so this is how much parkland, and that's measured by acres of thousand populations. You can see the, where the city of South Fulton ranks to these cities. If you go to the next slide, we can see how it ranks to cities that are considered to have really great park systems. And again, city of South Fulton is in the lower spectrum. We go to the next slide. In terms of finances, we looked, we identified there's, there's an opportunity to improve cost recovery when it comes to providing programs. But as we improve cost recovery, we also have to be mindful of providing scholarship policies and establishing scholarships. So we, we ensure that residents that are not able to pay for some programs, that they're able to, to participate in those programs. We go to the next slide. So that's point number three. Now we get into the fourth big idea, which was enhancing marketing and communications. And so what we found was, if you go to the next, if you go to the next slide, is that the number one reason that was preventing users from using programs was that they don't know what is being offered. That 53% of respondents said so. And then if we compare that to national averages, which is, which is 35%, we see there's a big difference there. So there's a really a need to improve communication. So we dug in a little deeper. If you go to the next slide, and we were identified, we asked respondents how they learned about recreation programs and activities. And we found that 18% of residents said that they use the website compared to the national average. That's 36%, that's 36%. There's a gap. There's a big difference there. And the same thing with the department brochure. So these are two really easy and low-hanging fruit areas that the department is already working on to improve that communication and access to, to programs. We go to the next slide. Next key point is the need to customize parks and recreation and cultural priorities. And what we found was that there's, residents have identified a variety of amenities that they would like to see more of. So if we go to the next slide, as a reminder, these are all the different techniques we use to identify that. The most powerful and strong one is the statistically valid survey, because it's random, and it's matched the demographics of the community. So we use the rest of the techniques to compare against that. So if we go to the next slide, we see that the high priorities programs, oh, I'm sorry, facilities that residents said that they wanted to see more of are these right here. And again, on the left-hand side, you can see the facilities. The first column is the findings from the statistically valid survey. And then you see dots on all the other techniques where we heard the need for this particular facility or amenity. And so again, you can see which one are the high priorities in this slide. If you go to the next slide, it shows you the medium priorities per the statistically valid survey. And also where we also saw those, where we, we heard those facilities and amenities as well through the different techniques. And then the next slide shows the low priority facilities. And these are low priorities in that residents said that they, these facilities were important to them, but they may be addressed already. So that's why they're considered low priorities. The others are essentially facilities that are also important, but, but not provided as adequately as these might be. So if we go to the next slides, it's the same thing but for programs. So this is looking at programs and activities. So these are the high priority programs and activities that residents said they'd like to see provided better in the city. And again, you can see the findings from the statistically valid survey and where we heard the need for that program and activity and the other techniques. If we go to the next slide, you see the medium priorities. And then the low priorities. And we also looked at how these, the programs are, relate to the demographics of the community. So what you're seeing here are the core programs that the department offers and how they match the demographics. So overall, we felt that this was a really good, the department is being responsive to the demographics of the community. The one area that we believe may need attention moving forward is seniors. As the city continues to grow, demographic projections suggest that the population will get older. So there may be a need to provide senior programs more primary versus secondary. And those are the letters that you're seeing here. S is secondary, P is primary, and that's how the, the department offers the programs. And again, this is something that the department would review every year to make sure that, or to compare how it's relating to the demographics. Next slide. We also saw that the, the department is doing a good job from a life cycle perspective of programs. If you think, we think about facilities, facilities have a life cycle, right? At the beginning, they're in good shape, but after a while, we need to replace them because they deteriorate. The same thing with programs. At first, they're very exciting, but after a while, they may mature. And then there's a point where we need to replace the programs. And the numbers in yellow are what are the recommend, recommended distribution of programs as they relate to the three stages. And so we believe that because the city is a relatively new city, the distribution of programs is actually pretty good. But moving forward, we want to be mindful of these to make sure that we're, we're staying on top of these life cycles and running programs through the cycle to keep them fresh and exciting for residents. Next slide, please. We also looked at the pricing strategies that are used for programs. And overall, the city does use a good, diverse strategy for programming and pricing the programs. What we do believe is that there's an opportunity to consider the customer's ability to pay in terms of how to price programs. And moving forward, we'll work with staff on potential practices and how that can be integrated to how the department prices programs. Next slide, please. We also looked at the youth athletic leagues. And what we found was that 50%, 57% of youth athletic programs appear to need re-energizing. As you can see from this chart here, there is that 42% that says minimal to no participation growth in extreme competition. So that's an indication to us that there is a need to really re-energize some of those programs and look at how they're being offered. We also saw that the cost recovery on those is, is low. They typically, these programs should have 100% cost recovery goal, and right now, there, there is none. So there's an opportunity there to improve that. We go to the next slide. We also found that the experience that these youth leagues provide are not consistent across the board. So there's an opportunity to improve that consistency. And one way to do that may be to create policies outlining expectations of different things, like safety measures, code of conduct, volunteer screening, et cetera. And then better communication with coaches and our parents to streamline information exchange. Now, what's interesting is that when we compared this to basketball, which is the one program that the department offers in-house, we found that there was a lesser magnitude of issues versus the other programs. So moving forward, we look forward to working with staff and considering best practices and provide some suggestions on how best to explore the delivery of youth athletic programs in the city. Next slide, please. The last element we want to talk about was the need to maximize resource generation and allocation. So you may recall, when we talked a little bit about programs, we believe there is a need to further integrate the cultural offerings that the department has into the assets and services in the coming years. And in order to do that, what we believe is important is to target, identify the target markets and define them better as we develop the programs. And then also, while program standards and quality assurance measures are in the process of being established, we believe that's something that will also need a little, need more attention to ensure consistency, better communication with the user groups, and then also identify the expectations, the community's expectations, develop performance metrics accordingly. Now, from an operation standpoint, we believe that a more comprehensive assessment and approach to cultural factors is needed. Best practices in service delivery and partnerships management is some, also something that we believe is needed. And while there's tracking data currently happening for operations, we believe that key performance indicators are needed to ensure management outcomes and better resource allocation. And something that we see across the industry is the development of professional development plans for staff to make sure that customer service is provided in a high-quality way. Now, what's interesting is, is when we asked residents, again, and you've seen the slide, of how their perception of the value of parks had increased or had been impacted during COVID, we saw that 75% mentioned that the value had increased or somewhat increased. And when we asked them how they would like the city to fund it, again, 92% of respondents said that they'd like to see funding increased. And when we asked residents their willingness to pay increased taxes per month, what we found was that 60% of residents said that they were willing to pay $1, $1 to $5 per month in increased taxes for the parks and recreation services that they felt were most important. We go to the next slide. And the key to this is leveraging those dollars with other, with other dollars, right? Leveraging tax dollars with other dollars and then grants and philanthropic contributions were the two highest sources of funds that residents would like to see dollars come from. And this is something that we see typically in the communities that we work with and a great opportunity for, for the city. Next slide. So again, that was, those were the six big ideas. If, and again, what we look forward to now is working with staff to develop recommendations and explore how the city of South Fulton would like to respond to these identified needs and priorities that we've identified this through the process. So how are we going to do that? Let's go to the next slide. This shows is our schedule. Right now, we're getting ready to enter the visioning phase of the process. And again, this is one where we're going to take these findings and then work with staff to see how best we respond to these findings and use that to create, create a long-range vision. And that long-range vision will include a citywide vision as well as conceptual master plans for each of the city's parks. That will then take us through the implementation phase, where we will see how to essentially break this vision up and implement it over the next five to 10 years. And then we look forward to completing this project around the springtime of 2021. And just to give you an idea of what some of these deliverables might look like, we go to the next slide. This is an example of what some of these would look like. So there's going to be a citywide vision plan that identifies where park improvements and new parks and facilities are needed. And then we'll also have sketches like these that identify both potential prototypes as well as the improvements to parks as well. If we go to the next slide. That'll take us to the implementation phase, where we will develop both capital costs as well as estimated operations and management costs for the improvements. And then the next slide will show, we will match this to not only the city dollars, but also any alternative funding sources that may be available in the state. And then we will match the priorities. We'll break up the vision into priority initiatives and projects, and then match those to realistic funding sources, both capital as well as operations and management. And then we will develop a report. The goal is to develop a very simple-to-read streamlined report with relevant appendices and executive summary document. It's also easy to read and then share that with council for approval at the, again, spring 2021. So with that, again, we thank you for this opportunity to share these findings with you. Look forward to answering any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much. I think you just about went through all six of them, didn't you?
Yes, sir.
That's okay. Any, any questions?
Yes, do we go in the queue?
In the queue.
Let me see here. So right here, we're in the queue. I see Ms. Gilliard in the queue, then Ms. Gump, then Ms. Willis.
Um, oh. Is the trail system included in this project?
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we will be doing is in addressing the needs of residents of providing multipurpose trails, is developing a framework for what that system could look like. Now, there was one that was done for the county many years ago. It was a TrailNet plan. So we, we will be incorporating that into this and then looking at ways to build from it. So yes, there will be a overall framework for a trail plan in the city.
And, and, and this is probably an ambitious question, but what kind of timeline? First of all, will the report have a timeline in it in terms of how we could efficiently roll it out? Because we can't do everything, you know, in, in one year. So I'm thinking there will be a timeline included in it as well as the cost.
Yes, ma'am. The strategy would be to match realistic funding that the city has with, with high priority projects. And then use that to develop an implementation plan over the next five, 10, and even plus years, because there's a lot of improvements that may not be able to happen in 10 years, right? Given funding realities. But we will lay that out for staff and council's consideration.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Gilliard. Councilmember Gump.
So thank you for your presentation. Just a few quick questions. Councilwoman Gilliard just mentioned the trail system. Is that in conjunction with the Aratropolis, the Model Mile?
They're, they're much further ahead than we are, right? The Model Mile takes a deeper look at that one segment and is developing a really tighter conceptual plan for that area. Ours will be more of a framework plan that just identifies potential areas and order of magnitude costs, right? High-level costs of what it would be, be to implement those. And then the idea would be that when the segments would want to be implemented, there would be further study to be done for those areas in terms of identifying, creating survey and looking at them closer.
Gotcha. Okay. Also, I know that it's probably been tough to get a lot of citizen participation during this time of COVID. What ways are you all trying to maneuver to get more community input and engagement around the Park Master Plan?
Sure. That's a great question. What we've, what we've enjoyed really was, was how staff was able to, staff in the city were able to respond to public engagement during this pandemic. staff in the city were able to respond to public engagement during this pandemic through a virtual strategy. And we actually ended up, when we compare the engagement, the virtual engagement that we have through this project in comparison to other projects that were done in person, we actually got more engagement virtually than we did in person, which was really great to see. So moving forward, we hope to continue that same strategy. So we will be providing access to virtual presentations and meetings to interested residents. And then using email and other social media to let residents know of these events and then look forward to engaging them in those opportunities. Now, as the city, if the city starts opening up based on COVID responses, then we would look to adjust our public engagement strategy as necessary and/or desired by the city.
Councilmember Gump, it's probably important for us to note that Perez and Perez is supplementing their efforts through activities that the city has for public engagement, for some of that in-person activity as well, whether it be the feedings or our mailers and things of that nature. And while we're only in phase two, that 1,300 number, we expect to go up significantly as they move into the more public engagement-friendly activities.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Gump. Councilmember Willis?
Yes, I want to thank you for an awesome presentation. And my question was going to be the opposite. My question was going to be, how did you get so many people to respond? Because, and Mr. Donald answered that. I think you did a very good job getting so many people to respond. 1,300 people is a lot compared to the other strategic plans we went through. The other plans, we went through a master plan for planning and zoning. We went through a master plan for strategic planning. We went through economic development master plan. I don't even think we cracked 500. So I think you're on a trajectory of touching, you know, I think you did a very good job.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And you're not even finished. So I think we should continue whatever you're doing. We usually do feedings twice a month. And that draw a lot of people and whatever else community outreach program we can do with this pandemic, I would say try to, you know, reach out. You have flyers you need us to pass out. We would do that. My question is, and I only have one question. Division of Cultural Arts and Affairs, you touched on it and you said we need to do an assessment on the programming of that. Most of this master plan was centered around the park and recreation piece. Right now, you know, we have Culture Arts and Affairs tied into park and recreation. And, you know, I just don't see where that's going to work or be beneficial. I think they need to be two separate divisions with two separate department heads. Is that second phase, are you going to focus more on how we should offer cultural arts?
That's a great question as well. What we found was that because you have some really unique offerings and you're going to be receiving an amphitheater at the end of the year, the various facilities that the city has do require a more focused assessment of these, of this program and of these facilities. So we can only go so deep in this particular assessment. So moving forward, the idea would be to create a vision that really provides the city with flexibility of either way that they would want to go in the future in terms of keeping it under one department, which there are departments across the country that do have it that way, or keep it separate.
Okay. And so can you give us more data on that, on cities? I know Jackson, Mississippi, they have an amphitheater and they have a couple of art. They have a couple of art museums. So can you give us more data on that? I would like to see how other cities comparative to our size or who have amphitheaters. And we have two art centers. We have New Hope and we have the one on in Clintonville. And how they're offering their, how they're interacting with parks and cultural arts and affairs? Is it separate? Is it together? How big is the department and how do they offer it to their community?
Sure, we can explore that a little more in the visioning phase of this as we look to respond to some of these recommendations.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Reeves? Councilmember Reeves?
I had to unmute, sir. I'm sorry. Thank you for an awesome presentation. And as I do stand with the rest, that I do agree with more time if need be. But as it pertains to, we had some one-offs. And as it pertains to Burt at Park, you know the sentiments that I had. But I just want a question answered for the constituents of District Five for the city. Is that can any federal money be earmarked for municipal parks?
Federal money earmarked for municipal parks? That's a good question. There are some federal funding sources that are provided for park improvements. And some of those are, the cities and municipalities do use them to provide park recreation services.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kalid?
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Perez, for this amazing presentation. I wanted to ask about the Cultural Affairs Division as well. I know that, well, I'm told that a lot of art centers and amphitheaters don't necessarily make profits. And so I would be interested in future presentations on if you could provide just informations on, information, I'm sorry, on like different financial models that different cities are using for their amphitheaters and art centers. Are they generating profits? Are they taking losses? Are they breaking even? And then, you know, how are they doing that? Are they staffing? Are they outsourcing those services for shows? Do they have in-house departments? Just to get a better understanding of what other cities are doing financially to make these models work. Because I know that they are public good, so they're not necessarily supposed to generate huge profits. But I also know that art centers and arts programs can be expensive to operate.
Yeah, we'd be happy to look into that and provide some content.
All right. Mr. Baker?
Yes, thanks for the presentation. I only have one quick question. And this regarding identifying funds. I know towards one of your latter slides, you made a comment about the public wanted to see you guys look for grants and funds outside of the city. Will you be providing us an update of the source of those fundings that may be available that we may qualify for?
Yes, sir. We'll provide a list of both federal as well as some local grants that are available. I think the metro area, one of the opportunities that the metro area has uniquely is philanthropic contribution, right? We benefit from quite a bit of philanthropy in the metro area. So we'll also provide a list of some of those as well.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much again for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Couple of things from me. One I'm having to do, and Mr. Manager, I want you to hear this and maybe you can chime in. Because a lot has been said about senior services. You know that the county is definitely responsible for senior services. And what's interesting is that we're the only city that does not have a senior center. Joel Carn has put in for a feasibility study to look at the possibility of doing that. I think that some of that programming that we talked about can be delivered over to the county in terms of giving us a senior program like they've done all the other cities, okay? So what I'm saying to you is that we need to track what that feasibility study is doing and where we're at. So that at some point in time, we can have a senior facility in South Fulton.
Yes, sir. I think you hit the nail on the head when you mentioned that while the county oversees those services, there's definitely a way for us to get involved. I think you remember that Perez and Perez has played a very big role in the District of Columbia's transformation of their park center and using feasibility studies and other plans that helped to supplement that is why they were so successful. And so we actually met, and I don't know Mr. Perez, I think it was a week ago, but we talked about bringing all of those things to the fold because that's a new one. And their Phase Three and Phase Four will incorporate all of those ancillary activities and help us present something that is very effective. But yes, sir, absolutely. We will.
I just wanted to know that since he started that motion in that direction with the feasibility study, he's not going to be returning to office. We need to make sure that we follow that path.
Yes, sir. No, you're 100% correct. That feasibility study, but also I think what we talked about is while it doesn't directly impact parks, even the sewer assessment and thing, when we talk about our quality of life is really going to have an impact on the future of the city. And our park system will benefit if the right investments are made. And so I'm extremely confident in this vendor being able to tie them off.
I beg, I'm going to differ with you a little bit. I think a senior center does impact our parks in many ways.
I think it does. It's an ancillary activity, but it ensures that we have the right quality of life activities in our parks and in support of our park system. And so that's why I'm saying the Perez and Perez group will incorporate all of those activities into their final report during Phase Three and Phase Four. I want to chime in, you know, I didn't want to, I know he called on me specifically, but I know we talked about incorporating all of these things to make sure the City of South Fulton's report is one of the best that you've done. So if you'd like to chime in and get some insights on that, feel free.
Sure, no, I appreciate that. And yes, we'll consider these factors into the recommendations and look forward to getting the city's thoughts on those.
Okay, thank you so much. And the other thing I didn't hear a lot about, but I think it's a great addition to our park system, you didn't talk a lot about passive parks. Was there a reason for that?
It was seen more in the, if we want, if you go, if we see the slide where we identified the high priority needs, we see that natural areas and multipurpose trails were high in terms of a desired need. And that's also consistent with what we're seeing with other cities across the country and even the projects that we're doing right now. So it was addressed in that way. I may have not set specifically passive parks, but we can see in the findings that that's something that residents would like to see more.
Well, I think that, I think it's something to have discussion over. And if we disguise it under something else, the people may not have an opportunity to give you feedback. And the term passive parks kind of lets them understand.
Sure, and that's, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
And that's something that we can definitely bring up more specifically when we get to the individual park improvements and the plans for each of the parks, when we can get thoughts from residents of what they'd like to see in those particular facilities and parks.
Now, let me, my final comment, and let me, is toward the cultural arts aspect of what you don't. I too agree with Ms. Willis. I do not, I think it's an effective approach to have the arts and culture with the arts, with the parks and recreation program. Out of 17 parks and all that you're saying that we should need or we should have, it's going to be a big job just with those particular programs. However, let me say something else in conclusion, ladies and gentlemen. Somebody told me a long time ago, turned to me in a city, in a commission meeting and said, amphitheaters don't make no money. My reply to that person at that time was neither does the library. I'll expand. And most things that we do in the city or as a county, we don't reap a benefit from it. But it's what the citizens would like for us to do with their money to make sure that we enhance their quality of life. That's what we do. It's a little thing called service. That's what people pay for. Even in the amphitheater with Wolf Creek. I'm going to tell you. When we instituted a fund that protected Wolf Creek, it's an enterprise fund, Wolf Creek became self-sufficient. All of the monies that went in the enterprise fund went to improving the facility. But I won't harp on that because I know it's a part of that on the agenda. But I want to make sure that people understand as taxpayers, we take your money and give you what you want. Whether we make a profit, that's good. But we're looking to break even. That's what we can. We don't want to lose money, but we're looking to break even or make some semblance of a profit. But you can't hold people's head about, well, we didn't make a profit. Because we have so many things that don't make a profit. And thank you, Ms. Willis. I acknowledge you, and we'll move on to the next item. Ms. Willis?
Ma'am, thank you for, it's two things. I'm not surprised that walking trails came at top of the list because we have a very engaged and active community in our city. We have people who love to walk, who love to bike, and who love to run. And so I'm not surprised that came in at top of the list. The other thing is, we're not in business to make money, as you stated, so I'm glad you clarified that. We're in business to provide service. And our residents, we could have easily walked away from the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. But that's not something our residents wanted us to do. Our residents want that entertainment in our city so that we can have an entertainment quality of life. They have amphitheater in Sugarloaf. They have an amphitheater in Sandtown. They have several amphitheaters in the City of Atlanta. And the citizens in this city don't want to have to travel outside the city to go to other cities for entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for a great report, Mr. Perez. Madam, quickly, two times the next item, please.
The next agenda item is council discussion on South Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan. City Manager.
Yeah, Council, just wanted to make sure that we introduced. It's been a very long road for the transportation plan. Mr. Valenzuela and his crew have been assisting us in coordinating this process for really, I mean, we're almost a year in now. And so we are excited to present, you know, the close to final plan from our partners. And our partners at Modern Mobility, and so they will be providing the presentation today. Just a reminder that we are trying to stick to the 10-minute rule and provide plenty of time for question and answers for council. If you go over that time, the mayor has definitely been lenient, but we're trying to stay as close to it as possible and leaving plenty of time for our council to ask questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Valenzuela.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Council. If you don't mind, just allow the time, all the time that's required for our consultants working for ARC to make the presentation. With that said, I believe we have Ms. Kelly Kemp for Modern Mobility doing the presentation.
Okay. I'll go ahead and get started and I will go as fast as possible. Again, my name is Kelly Kemp. I am one of the owners of Modern Mobility Partners and the consultant project manager for the Southern Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And we are contracted with the Atlanta Regional Commission. And it covers all eight cities within Southern Fulton, including the City of South Fulton. So tonight, we're going to talk about the, basically the preliminary recommendations and how we got here. It's been a little over a year and a half since we started the study. I came and presented to you last year around this time and promised you I would be back. And here I am, just virtually. So anyway, we'll go ahead and move on to the next slide. Slide. So what is the Southern Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan? Essentially, we're providing a master list of prioritized Slide. So what is the Southern Fulton Comprehensive Transportation Plan? Essentially, we're providing a master list of prioritized transportation projects across all eight cities, across all modes. Um, and so we're providing a short and midterm project list over the next five to 10 years with really starting in 2023, recognizing that your current SPOSS program goes through 2022. Um, and that's what we consider your financially feasible plan, but we also have projects in your long-term tier, which is greater than 10 years. And it's important to note that um, as long as a project is included in any one of those three buckets, it's considered in the plan. And as long as you adopt the plan and as long as the project is in the plan, then you can apply for federal funding with the A R C through their uh, regular call for projects. Uh, and the project list can also be used to populate your next SPOSS program project list. Slide. So this is just the study area. Again, this includes all eight cities, uh, including City of South Fulton. Slide. Uh, overall schedule, again, we started back in February. Uh, we had a robust engagement process, both with stakeholders and the public that I'll go through shortly. That has happened all along the way, both pre and during COVID. Uh, we did a very detailed inventory assess, inventory and assessment of all the different modes of travel, the ways to get from point A to B, whether it's bicycle, pedestrian, transit, roadway, freight, et cetera. Uh, and came up with a preliminary list of projects that we put out to the public for review as well as the stakeholders. And now we have documented our plan, the executive summary document and its appendices that were provided to you and are on the project website are what we are asking that you guys consider for adoption at your next regularly scheduled meeting. And we are presenting to all the city councils at this time. So how did we engage the public and stakeholders? Slide. For stakeholders, we had over six project management teams, or team meetings, excuse me, and the project management team was made up of each of the cities. We had a representative from each of the cities, um, as well as Marta and GDOT and the Atlanta Regional Commission. We also had five stakeholder committee meetings and you can see all the logos on the right side. Those were all the folks that were invited to these meetings. We had a mayor charrette, um, that I recognize several of your headshots from. Um, at where we piggybacked last year off of the South Fulton Chamber meeting and did a little exercise of what you value most when prioritizing projects. Um, several of you were involved in our bus tour where we went and looked firsthand at some of the challenges and opportunities. We had one-on-one meetings with each of the cities, GDOT and Marta. And now we are finishing up our second round of eight totaling sixteen presentations to the city councils. Slide. So how did we engage the public? Uh, well, in addition to these city council meetings, we had eight in-person public meetings in September of last year. Uh, that resulted in seventy-two in-person public meeting attendees, but we also livestreamed those meetings on Facebook Live and those were then passed along as well. And that resulted in over three thousand views of those public meetings. During COVID in May, we did another round of three live-recorded virtual public meetings. And those were also uh, passed around since they were recorded and got almost twelve hundred views and probably more now to date. As part of that, we also had several surveys. We had an online survey last year that resulted in over um, well, it was online and in person, that resulted in over eleven hundred responses. And then we had another survey this spring during COVID that resulted in over six hundred responses. And we had an online mapping tool that was available to both stakeholders and the public um, where they could actually comment on specific projects. And pre-COVID, we had eight roving outreach events in the community. And one of the things I also mentioned, wanted to mention, and I believe Councilwoman Willis mentioned it in the earlier presentation about some of your food donation boxes. With COVID, we did take you guys up on your offer and handed out over three hundred flyers uh, regarding our virtual um, opportunities to get engaged in those COVID food donation boxes, which was a big help. So we appreciate that. Slide. So how are we, how did we come up with recommendations and how do we prioritize them? Slide. Uh, this is the vision that should be familiar to you. Uh, it was developed with your input and others much earlier in the study, which was to provide residents, businesses and visitors with a safe, connected and reliable transportation system. Slide. And out of that vision, we developed three goals that were updated from the last plan with input that we received from the general public and the stakeholders and metrics, or excuse me, objectives within each of those goals. And then we also developed metrics within each of those objectives to make sure that we're evaluating projects that meet the goals and objectives of the plan. I'm not going to go through every single word here, but I just wanted to mention there's three goals. One is to provide safe and reliable mobility options for all. Goal two is to provide a connected, reliable transportation system that operates efficiently and supports future growth. And when I say connected, I mean both physically from point A to B, as well as technologically, where we connect between vehicles and the infrastructure and back to the transportation management center as we consider new and emerging technologies. And then goal three is to promote economic growth, not only in Southern Fulton, but also in the Atlanta region as a whole. Slide. One of the things that we did that was unique to this C T P in the region is that we developed a corridor framework with input from the stakeholders where we looked at the competing um, intended uses and land use, land uses along um, a lot of the major corridors. What we did is we first identified a proactive smart corridor network. So all the red, which is essentially all the corridors here um, that we've identified are smart corridors that would be right for smart mobility improvements, whether it's signal priority or immediate emergency vehicle preemption, or other technological improvements that would improve safety and mobility. We also looked at the intended use of those corridors, whether it was for livability or quality of life, like the mayor uh, mentioned earlier. So transit, pedestrian, um, bicyclist. Um, and we also looked at whether or not it should be focused more on economic freight corridor opportunities, or both in some instances, and trying to balance those needs. Recognizing that we did not recommend any of the corridors that prohibited trucks based on your ordinances to be freight corridor. So I just wanted to clarify that. Slide. We had eight different project evaluation criteria that were used to evaluate projects for the recommendations and to score them. These were based on feedback received from the stakeholder and the public, safety, public health system preservation, regional impact, project readiness, economic impacts, mobility options and access and connectivity and reliability. All of those um, align with the vision and the refined goals and objectives. And we developed waiting scenarios based off of the survey feedback that I'll get into shortly. Slide. So we asked the public and the stakeholders based on where they lived, um, what they would, how they would prioritize these eight different criteria when fig- when selecting projects for implementation. So as you can see on the top right, City of South Fulton, um, the number one priority for respondents was safety. Uh, and the number two in the white blue was connectivity and reliability. On the bottom right, you'll see survey average. That is for the whole region. And um, not too much to my surprise, since the City of South Fulton residents make up just under half the South cities, or excuse me, Southern Fulton County region. Um, it's a very similar trend that we see for the survey average compared to just the City of South Fulton. Uh, we took into account both of those when prioritizing projects for your city as well as for the region as a whole. Slide. So when we prioritize projects, we first took the full universe of projects and then calculated a raw score based on all the metrics. And then applied the city weighting um, scenario based on the survey results for your city. And then the regional weighting average and then developed a combined city and regional score uh, with the ranking that we then tiered into um, the short, mid and long term based on funding availability, project readiness, et cetera. Slide. So what are the projects that we recommended? Slide. Um, first, as a total for the whole Southern Fulton County region as a whole, there were three hundred and eighty-one new projects. And when I say new projects, I mean projects that aren't currently programmed for funding, which means they aren't in the SPOSS program already, or they're not already programmed for funding in the regional transportation plan with A R C. So there were projects that were studied before, but did not have any funding assigned to them. So those would be considered new. All right? Um, so we came up with brand-new projects entirely as well, but we also looked at over a thousand projects that were already studied in some form or fashion in Southern Fulton as well. So we weren't reinventing the wheel and making sure that we were leveraging a lot of the good ideas that have come forth in the past. Um, that three hundred and eighty-one projects translates to about two-point-six billion dollars in projects. Um, about uh, a hundred and ninety million of those projects would be in the first five-year timeframe based on funding availability. And another two-hundred-and-eighteen million in that six-to-ten-year timeframe. You'll notice that when you look at the total number of projects, you have a hundred and ten projects, so about twenty-five percent-ish or a little more than that, actually. Um, that would be entirely funded in those first five years. And yet they're a lot more, a lot less expensive. And that's because there are those lower hanging fruit opportunities. We also have projects that start being funded in the five-year and then continue in the ten-year and some that start in ten and continue in long-term and et cetera. Slide. So out of all eight cities, um, for the City of South Fulton, you have a total of a hundred and thirty-six out of the three hundred and eighty-one projects or nine-hundred-and-four million dollars in projects out of the, the two-point-five-eight-six billion. Um, fifty-nine of those hundred and thirty-six are in the first five years or eighty-eight million. Sixteen projects in the ten, ten-year band or a hundred and eight million and then sixty-one in the long-term or seven-hundred-and-seven million. Slide. So um, now I'm going to go through, there are several different categories of projects, and this is not meant to be an all-inclusive list, but is more of just some highlights. Um, and the inclusive list of all hundred and something projects are in the appendix of the executive summary document as well as corresponded maps with ID numbers. Um, but in your bicycle and pedestrian um, project category, there's several sidewalk projects. Um, that, you know, for instance, Riverside Drive, Union Road, um, Campbellton Road near Westlake High School. Um, there are sidewalks at Campbellton Fairburn Road, State Route Ninety-two and Cascade Palmetto Highway. Uh, there's various sidewalks and crosswalks that have been coordinated with the planned bus shelters for Marta. Um, in the previous presentation, there were several questions around trails. And so I was kind of taking some notes there. And so hopefully this might answer some of your questions. Uh, we did include all of the uh, trail projects that were included in your South Fulton Trail Net. I believe that was seven different segments. So they are all included in the plan. There's a multi-jurisdictional trail project along U S twenty-nine. Um, the Arrow A two L Greenway Plan had an outer loop trail that was included. That's also multi-jurisdictional as well as the um, Chattahoochee Riverlands Greenway along the Chattahoochee River. Slide. Uh, as far as roadway asset management, we made sure that we included a lump sum amount across all year bands um, for resurfacing. And we made sure I would note, I wanted to note that we included more money for where there were freight facilities, where the trucks would be requiring more um, frequent resurfacing. So we took that into account as well. Uh, we also looked at your bridge conditions and where there might be rehabilitation or replacements for bridges. So those fall in that category. Within roadway expansion, we've got several widening projects. Um, widening Cascade Palmetto from Campbellton Fairburn to Roosevelt Highway from two to four lanes. That's a multi-jurisdictional project. We have widening from two to four lanes for Campbellton Road from F I B to Reynolds Road. We have Butler Road from Stonewall Tell to Camp Creek Parkway. And we've got um, U S twenty-nine from South Fulton Parkway to Washington Road, another multi-jurisdictional. Slide. Slide. For transit expansion, we've got Bus Rapid Transit along U S twenty-nine Roosevelt Highway. That's a multi-jurisdictional project. Uh, there was a mobility district for on-demand transit service that came out of the um, Eritropolis Transit Plan um, that, think about it as kind of like a Uber for transit um, on-demand service. Uh, high-capacity rapid transit on Camp Creek Parkway from the Marta Station in College Park to F I B. That's another multi-jurisdictional. And there's high-capacity transit on South Fulton Parkway from Ninety-two to Campbellton Redwine. Um, and that is an extension of the program transit project from College Park, Marta Station to State Route Ninety-two. Uh, I mentioned earlier some bus stop amenity improvements. That was a big discussion um, throughout the plan process. Uh, was bus stop amenity improvements, including bus shelters, benches and trash receptacles. So those were, we identified at several locations. We also um, suggested the potential for a regional contract amongst the eight um, cities or the cities that would have transit that are interested in bus stop maintenance, uh, because there was a lot of discussion about that. So that's something that you guys could consider um, with some economies of scale and improvements to the South Side Park and Ride uh, were also included. And again, this is not an all-inclusive list, but some of the highlights. Slide. For um, TSMO or Roadway Transportation System Management and Operations, there was, um, these are like your traffic operations improvements as well as some of your technology projects. Um, loud and clear, we heard all throughout the public engagement process was the Publix area at Campbellton Fairburn or, or State Route Ninety-two and South Fulton Parkway. So we did do a more detailed traffic analysis in that area and came up with some additional intersection improvements for that area above and beyond what's already um, been improved there. Uh, if you haven't heard of the C V one K program or the Connected Vehicle One Thousand Plus, uh, that is a large regional program that GDOT and A R C has been uh, leading. And so we've included phase one and identified other opportunities as well um, for emergency vehicle preemption, transit signal priority and where it makes sense, freight signal priority uh, during the off-peak, um, like late at night or really early in the morning along freight corridors so that we can um, incentivize trucks to use them during that time instead of residential roads or during the peak. Um, and there's also onboard units for fire vehicles for emergency vehicle preemption as well as part of phase two so that they can take full advantage of the software at the signalized intersections. We also have several plans, studies and policies that we've included. Um, a pedestrian and bicycle master plan, a study for a new roadway facility parallel um, to the north of Camp Creek Parkway um, from around F I B to Butler Road, a U S twenty-nine corridor study throughout the length. Um, you know, we recognize that there's a lot of challenges along that corridor with the railroad and just doing a more in-depth analysis there, um, in addition to a lot of the improvements that are already planned. And then um, a policy for um, designing multi-use trails and/or sidewalks during the development or renovation of any Fulton County facility. And I believe that came from your previous plan. Slide. So this is a map. You'll see it's a lot of projects. Um, you have bigger, you can zoom in. Excuse me, um, in the appendix of the executive summary. Um, and it has these maps in there. It also has a tabular format with the ID numbers so you can match um, the projects. But you can see here that for the five-year projects, you've got a lot of um, transit asset management and system upgrade projects. Um, those are your green triangles. Um, you've got a lot of roadway TSMOs. So those are a lot of your connected vehicle projects. Um, you've got some um, trail, you got the trail projects, you've got some bicycle and pedestrian sidewalks. Uh, and so there's, there's a lot of variety a- across the region there. Slide. Uh, you can see when we get to the ten-year projects, you see more lines than dots and those, because those lines cover more geography and they, those cost more money. Um, and so we have a lot of uh, trail and bicycle pedestrian projects in here as well as um, some roadway expansion um, and TSMO as well. Slide. And then this is beyond ten years. Um, so everything else that's in your project list, you see a nice variety here. So these are going to be, a lot of your projects are going to cost a lot more money. Um, and keep in mind that when there's a multi-jurisdictional project, we take into account the financial feasibility of not just your match, but. The other jurisdictions match as well. So you guys may have more money in some instances, but to get the project actually implemented. We need the matches from the others as well. And so it's a matter of putting the money in reserve until they come up with their portion as well. Now, keep in mind that should you get additional money, you can always move these up and they only have to be in the plan. It doesn't matter what tier. Whether it's five, ten or beyond five, ten, um, to request, um, federal funds during the call for projects process with A R C. Slide. So this is a performance dashboard, um, for the plan level. So we're really comparing what it looks like now versus kind of your build and your no build in our future year twenty fifty. It's a lot of data, but what I want to really point out is that for the, the vehicle hours traveled, when you look at the twenty fifty E plus C, which is everything that's been funded. Currently prior to this plan, and if you were to build everything in our plan, you're, the time it takes to travel. Um, goes down a little bit, the time, the distance it takes, your vehicle miles travel goes up a little bit, which means you can cover more distance and less time. But the biggest impressive, um, statistic, and I will say that you guys benefited from it the most. Was, um, because you had more major capacity adding projects is the reduction in vehicle hours of delay in over eighteen percent. That is pretty big, um, a pretty big reduction. The other thing I wanted to note is that your, um, you have a hundred and forty-two miles of trails. In the twenty fifty build compared to zero now. Um, and so that would cover bicyclists and pedestrians. You also increase in shelters by three new shelters and you increase benches, um, from six to two hundred and nineteen benches. Um, we also look at, you know, how many projects you have that are multi-jurisdictional. There's forty-eight. We look at what's called the Social Vulnerability Index or S V I from the Centers for Disease Control. And we have thirty-one projects in your area that improve access to the socially vulnerable areas. We also have twenty-one projects that improve access to high isolation areas using transit and another forty-six using autos. That means when you look at the isolation index, that's measuring folks' access to hospitals, schools. Commercial centers and fire stations. Um, and so that, those are, um, pretty impressive numbers as well. Slide. But you may be wondering, how did we account for COVID nineteen and new and emerging technologies and all these different disruptors? And I am very pleased to say that we've actually been thinking about disruptors since the very beginning of the study. Um, all the way from the vision, we looked at connected vehicles that was reflected in the vision. Connected vehicles were also reflected in the goals and objectives. And just as a reminder, when I say connected vehicles, I mean those. That can speak, communicate with each other, um, communicate with the signals, for instance, and roadway sensors and back to the Transportation Management. Center, um, that, that way we can reduce crashes, improve mobility, reduce congestion, et cetera. Um, also during our inventory and needs, we did a very detailed. Inventory of where there was communications equipment within the Southern Fulton region. So we could figure out. Where there was communications capability, where there's fiber and for instance, if there's not fiber and there's a widening project, we actually included the cost. To include fiber while you're digging up the road anyways. It's a lot cheaper to do it that way. It's still expensive, but it's cheaper. Um, we also had the smart corridor network that we identified. Uh, and so in the project recommendations, we have several pro, smart corridor network projects. We included fiber in the cost estimate. Um, we, uh, installation of communications at several traffic signals. Emergency vehicle preemption, transit signal priority, freight signal priority in some instances, electric vehicle charging locations. And then for COVID, what we did is we came up with a reduced funding scenario where we had bookends. We have. Our status quo of what we've always had for, um. Motor fuel tax revenues and sales tax revenues. And, um, looked like, okay, what happens because of COVID? Is there, is it going to take a few years to get back up to where we were before or more? And previous, um, economic downturns have indicated that sometimes it can take ten years to get back to where you were. So we did have a reduced funding scenario where we said, okay, year one, it's tapered twenty percent. And then we taper it eighteen, sixteen, fourteen, et cetera, over the next ten years to get back to where it was before. So that we make sure our financially feasible plan really is financially feasible. Slide. So what's next? Slide. So we are making the presentation to all of you now. Um, we have, you are our fourth presentation out of the eight city councils. Um, for the work sessions and we've already had the city of Chattahoochee Hills adopt it as well at their regular meeting. Um, and we're expecting the other regular meetings to start happening here pretty soon as well. Uh, just as a reminder, um, the, it has, five of the eight cities have to adopt the plan in order for. It to be considered an adopted plan. Of course, we want all eight. Um, and again, to apply for federal funding, the project has to be in the plan. Um, and your city has to have adopted it. Um, and then again, if you have projects that come up after this plan is adopted. You can amend the plan. So before you submit for, uh, apply for federal funding. So. Um, I think I've got one more slide to open it up for questions and let you know where to find stuff. So on the website, southernfultonctp.org, you can find all of these documents. The first four are very detailed technical reports. Um, unless you have a lot of spare time, I would just focus on the executive summary report, the one on the far right. That is a high-level infographic storytelling document. Um, and in the appendix, it has all the projects and the project maps. Um, and should hopefully answer most of your questions as to how we got here. And slide. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you so much. Uh, I have been the queue council member Willis.
Okay.
Thank you for this, uh, study. It's been a long time coming. I can't tell you the countless meetings that I participated in.
Mm-hmm.
It, it pays because, um, I see a lot of the areas represented, um, in the study. Um, in, in the, in the area that I govern. The question that I do have, um, is, um. I know you, you, uh, laid out like the projects based on immediate five-year and ten-year. Um, is there going to be, um, some type of summary of how much the city would have to match for the cost of these projects?
There is. So each, to get to that number, we had to build it up. So each project actually has the, each city's respective match amount. And what we assumed if there might be a federal match potentially. Um, and, and so that was actually included in a detailed spreadsheet. Um, and I believe that has been provided. If not, we can provide that and it may actually be. I don't know if it's in the appendix or not. Um, Julia Billings is on the phone and. I'm going to ask her to shoot me a note and let me know if it's in the, remind me if the dollar amounts. For the matches are included in the appendix because I think it's just the total cost amounts. But yes, we have all that information. The other thing I want to add, Councilwoman, was that. We, um, I think something that was also a little bit unique for this C T P is that we developed a matrix. And included it in the appendix of their recommendations technical report, which I believe that one has all your details of the cost assumptions. And, um, that matrix has all the potential funding sources at the. Local, regional, state and federal level that that project type might be eligible for. And yes, I'm getting notification that the, um, estimated local and state and fed match are in, in the project list and the, um. And the report. So it's all in there.
Okay. And so who are going to lead, who is going to lead these projects? And I guess when is the first project going to be instituted?
So, um, because all the cities have their local match money tied up with the SLOSS program and that ends in twenty twenty-two. We don't have any of these projects, um, starting until twenty twenty-three. And so, yeah. And, and that's in there. Um, and you know, some projects, they're, depending on the type of project, if it's a, say, a, a signal priority technology project, that can happen pretty quickly. If it's a widening, that's going to take longer, you know, so.
Okay, last, last question and I, and I'll, um, yield back to, um, Mayor. Um, you be, uh, would you all be willing to, um, participate in council members, uh, um. Town hall meetings to specifically talk about, I mean, if you don't want to go over the whole plan, that's fine, but to sp, specifically talk about the areas. That, um, that are in the, in their districts that is going to be, um, that was highlighted in this plan.
Yeah, so, um, it, I'm happy to help out any way I can. If there's, is, how many of those are there? Is it just like? Is it one town hall per district and those are coming up soon or?
Well, I haven't scheduled mine yet, but I will, I do plan to schedule one, um, probably within the next month and, um, I just would. If I had to dedicate the whole meeting to this transportation plan if needed be. Uh, but if not, you know, I would give, I just wanted, um, you know, we went to the public and I remember us, you know, involving them. So I want to, I want to. Get the feedback, uh, of the completion of the plan.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I, I'm happy to. Um, we'll figure out a way to do it. Let me put it that way. We'll figure out a way to do it.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Khalid.
Hi, thank you. Um, I just have, I have one sort of basic question. The. You were saying that only the items that are on this plan could we seek federal funding for? So after we've approved this plan, is it possible later to go back and update the plan?
Yes. So, um, yes, you can amend the plan. Um, afterwards, if projects come up later that, like for instance, let's say from this parks plan that you guys were just. Presenting on and, and you're not very, you're not far enough along to have project recommendations. If there was some new trail project that came out of that to connect parks or something that was not in this plan. You could come back and amend the plan, um, before we, before submitting to A R C to request federal funds, if indeed that's what you wanted to do.
And so if, if we were to do that, do other cities have to sign off on the amended plan or?
That is a good question and I'm going to, so David Haynes with the Atlanta Regional Commission is on the phone. I don't know if David, if you know the answer to that, but. I would think that if it's going to be a major project that has a major ripple effect on the financial feasibility. I would think that it may need to require other cities, but there's not. Actual, is, this isn't like a, a, an R T P with the A R C where they have what's called a fiscally constrained plan to the dollar. Um, C T Ps don't have to be fiscally constrained and that's why we're calling it financial feasibility. Um, and so particularly if you're trying to get, you know, leverage some match money to get some federal funds. You know, I'm not sure if it would require the other cities or not. I don't know. David, do you know the answer to that?
I'm sorry, Kelly. Um, I was listening, but I was multitasking, so I, I didn't hear the exact question.
Uh, I'll repeat it. So basically in councilman, let me know if I get it wrong. Um. If they decide that they want to amend the plan later. Um, because a project came up, does it require all the cities to sign off on the amendment? Or just the city of South Fulton?
No, the city of South Fulton can do it, uh, on their own. And just, I think through notification to the other cities. Uh, I will say that that's pretty rare that that happens, but it is something that we can work with the city on if the need arises.
Alright, thank you.
That's a great question. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Guns.
Good afternoon. Well, good evening. Um, that was similar to my question. I know that, um, I had added. A few things such as the widening of, or consideration for the widening of Merck, uh, Road and Enon Road. Um, and possibility of some, uh, commercial development coming in that area and it wasn't included. I see some things that, um, did make the list, but just wondering if, again. We can go back and revise the plan. And I think you answered that question, um, for Councilman Khalid in that kind of answer line, I believe.
Yeah. And, and when you say didn't make the list, are you talking about the slides or the actual full tabular list?
The actual full tabulary.
Okay, okay.
Is that alright, Miss Guns?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Reeves.
Yes, good day. Um, thank you, Ms. Kemp, for that awesome presentation as, uh, I was. Privileged to come to an in-person meeting right before the, uh, COVID situation. Uh, but a couple of my questions was already asked and answered. And so I think with this last little tidbit. Is how important is the twenty twenty census count relative to the federal dollar that will be earmarked for these, uh, transportation projects? That, that should be coming up in the future.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to start answering that and then I might have David, um, with A R C chime in after that as it relates to. The importance or impacts of the twenty twenty census count to federal funding availability. Um, we went based off of the financial feasibility of the plan. Um, it is based off of historical revenues. Um, and so it's not accounting for, let's say if there's an increase in funding availability based on any growth from the census. Um, and I love it, by the way. That's great. Um, and, um, but so I don't know if David at A R C. I, I don't know if, I guess after the census results come in. You guys may take a look at how that impacts things, but in, I think everyone's going to be in a similar boat, right?
Yeah, I would. Federal dollars are. Around the country down to the states based on population. Uh, now money within the state isn't necessarily specifically divvied up based on population. Um, it's more of a need-based process. Based on safety issues or the amount of volume that you have on a road or a bridge sufficiency rating, things like that. Population doesn't directly factor into, uh, the regional transportation planning process. But what an undercount in South Fulton would mean is that there's a little bit less money coming to the state of Georgia, which has passed through. D O T pass through A R C, uh, and ultimately end up four projects in the city of South Fulton. So it would hurt the entire region if, um, you and other cities were, were under accounted. But it's not direct, it's more indirect.
Okay, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Rao.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you for that presentation. It's been a long road getting to this point, but. I think, uh, the key takeaway as we think about these various projects in our city to make sure. That we have the match in place, um, by making sure on our next round of T S Floss, we, we, we make these ma, these lists merry. So that the resources are there to bring these projects to fruition. And so, um, I just really can't emphasize that enough, the need for us to begin. To plan around the next round of T S Floss funding so that we can, um, please reality.
Yeah, what you could do is take that, take the project list and see which ones you want to use for T S Floss and which ones you want to. Use for, apply for federal money or both.
Okay. Councilmember Gillett.
Um, thank you also for your presentation. At the end, um, you gave out the information where we could obtain the presentation. I would appreciate it if you would give it to me because I need to spend some time with it.
Yeah, so the full executive summary with the project list and corresponding maps are. Yeah, so the full executive summary with the project list and corresponding maps are at SouthernFultonCTP.org. So that's SouthernFultonCTP.org, O R G. Um, and I believe you guys should have the PDF from today, but if not, I am more than happy to send it. Um, just let me know who I should send it to.
Oh, okay. You could, you can send it to Naema, that's N A E E M A dot Gil yard, G I L Y A R D.
Yeah.
At CityofSouthFultonGA.gov. I really appreciate it.
I got it. I will send that and, and, um, uh, we'll send that to you PDF from today.
Hey, thank you.
Sure thing.
That's yours, Congresswoman Gil Yard, you all right?
Yes, I'm fine. Thank you.
It covered three things for me. You know, I was, I was excited to see when you showed the, um, slide with all of the partners involved in. Uh, cause you know, as Mayor, I probably attend along with the city manager, uh, several briefings on, on transportation for different sources every month. But I'm here to tell you that I think the most highest responsible way to meet our transportation needs is through light rail. However, light rail on that list has been called, uh, unaffordable. And so there had to make between all the cities, there had to be a, we had to come to some kind of, uh, median point, and that median point was B R T. So what I would ask you to do is when you, when you are talking to these other groups about B R T, especially along the, uh, South Fulton Parkway, is that one of the things that was promised, where they would, they would, uh, build B R T, but they would build B R T in a manner in which it could be replaced with light rail in the future. What I, what I mean by that, I mean, they, they were going to, to get all the land that they needed. So when light rail becomes quote affordable, we would have already purchased the lane. All right? Uh, it's all about equity. That's what people have the most problem with. Scarlet by equity, whether it be north, south, east or west, it's all about equity. We need to make sure that whatever we do, especially along the Parkway, one of the problems we had is the Parkway in the meeting, in our existing meeting, and, and the city manager could tell you was, uh, they did a windshield tour. On the north side, we're talking about four hundred and comparing the same B R T to South Fulton Parkway. It was so different, you wouldn't believe, even the style of the, uh, bus station were totally different, and it raises ugly head, and, and that's why the issue of equity came in. Uh, the other thing I want to say is, I'm finally glad that people understand the needs of parallel roadways along our corridors like Camp Creek. Uh, that has been talked about for years. I think parallel corridors would work fine in areas like Camp Creek. It was even talked about, uh, years ago for, uh, South Fulton Parkway. But I think the, the concept of parallel, parallel roadways is a good concept, and I hope that people listen and we would, we would do that. Uh, the other issue I have, at some point in time in your, in your, in, when you look at your feasibility study, and you can answer this for me, will we ever have to consider flyovers in terms of transportation needs?
So are you referring to elevated structures for transit or roadway? I mean, yeah, I mean, that's usually done anytime on the transit side, well, and really for roadway as well. Once you get further along into what's called the project development process or the preliminary engineering, that's when you decide, do you go at grade, below grade, or above grade? Um, and so that's, and that, that's one of the things that's definitely looked at in detail when you're doing, say, a light rail study. And one thing that I wanted to mention is that, um, we did recommend, I didn't mention it in your PowerPoint, but we did recommend, um, a high-capacity transit feasibility study, sorry, I have a visitor now, a high-capacity transit feasibility study, um, from, um, city of, from South Fulton, uh, to city of Atlanta. So we did include that in the planning, um, policies and, and studies. And that would look specifically at high capacity, so, you know, whether it's light rail or otherwise. So that is in there. And city of Chattahoochee Hills adopted that, which was a big accomplishment for us.
So were you, the, uh, the destination for, uh, B R T down the Parkway, is it now, uh, Hamilton Fair?
I believe so, and then we had, we extended, um, I'd have to, we went back.
Well, that was conversation, I know it was Derrick Road at first. And then we extended it all the way down to, uh, Hamilton Fair.
Yeah, so one of our projects, sorry, I'm just looking at my notes, so we extend it. So right now, there was a high-capacity transit on South Fulton Parkway from ninety-two to Campbellton Redwine. And then we are including an extension of that program transit project from College Park Martyr down to ninety-two. Um, and then we're also including, uh, transit feasibility study, um, for high-capacity transit from basically southwest Fulton County up north, um, to the city of Atlanta. So that's included there, because it is a two thousand and fifty plan, so we want to think ahead.
Well, one more question and a comment. Um, I think that, uh, you talk about sidewalks and things of that nature. In your, in your, uh, feasibility study, did you take in consideration some C D B dot, C D B dollars, C D B G dollars, uh, going into those projects?
I think we did actually. I'd have to look at the matrix of potential funding sources, but I'm almost certain we did include that as a potential funding source. And what we did is we checked off all of those sources that would be potentially available based on that project type.
Yeah, because regardless of the C D B funding, uh, we have to decide as a city, uh, how much feasibility, how much, uh, C D B G funding will go into any project.
Right.
All right, so I don't know how much you decided it was going to be in there, but you know, it might be a different number from us.
Right, right. Well, so what we did was, we said, hey, this is the local match, and the local match, if it fell in one jurisdiction, the, that one jurisdiction got assigned the entirety of the local match. If it traversed multiple jurisdictions, then the proportion of the roadway that fell in that jurisdiction, that percentage was applied to the local match, okay? Um, what we did not say is, okay, and of that local match, this is much is going to come from C D B G, this much is going to come from this, this much is going to come from that. But what we did do is create a matrix that said, okay, this project is eligible for all these different types of funding sources to make sure folks are aware, because some folks don't realize all the different funding sources that a project may be eligible for.
Until we get rail. Uh, we're, we're, these are nice projects and stuff, but I think until we get rail, uh, that's going to be the most viable solution for us north and south. Uh, that's one thing we can agree on. Uh, that's no reason why we should stop modern services, modern rail services at College Park. I mean, it should go all the way down to Paramount, uh, to service those people. So until we get light rail or heavy rail, I think we're going to be always, and, and these projects that we're doing, we need to keep in mind that we're doing, but keep in mind that light rail or heavy rail will follow.
Right, and that would, that would come out of the feasibility study that we are recommending, and we've assigned dollars to that feasibility study to make sure it happens. Um, and, and that would be one of the scenarios, one or more of the scenarios that would be evaluated.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll close out. Ms. Willis is back in. We'll close out with you, our council member Willis.
One quick question, um, and I sent you a note, um, Kelly, can you please, instead of sending that presentation to one council member, can you send it to our clerk?
I will do that.
All of us, I, I put her email address in the, uh, chat box.
Diane White, okay.
Yes.
I will do, also, Ms. White, I'll just send it to you, and I'll let you forward it on to everybody. Does that sound good?
Yes, but it is attached to the agenda item. It is in the agenda. That's online.
Ms. White, if you could send a separate attachment, because all of the agenda has all, everything in one PDF. So I think many of us would like the separate attachment so we can put it into our, um, our newsletters.
No problem. Kelly, I already have it. I'll send it.
Thank you.
All right, so you're all over it. I'm not going to worry about it.
Thank you so much for an informative presentation.
Sure thing. Thank you.
We appreciate it. Madam Clerk, item please.
Next item on the agenda, on the agenda is council discussion on Cascade Road Bridge reopening repair. City manager.
Yes, sir, Mayor. I know this has been something that both you and Dr. Rao and all of our citizens have been, uh, waiting on patiently for a long period of time, and so we have distributed the council a memorandum that describes the reopening of the Cascade Road Bridge, and Mr. Valenzuela is simply just giving an overview for the edification of the public, and will be prepared to answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Valenzuela?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Uh, just a quick summary of where we are on, on the reconstruction of the new, uh, culvert at Cascade Road over a branch of Utah Creek. Um, the contractor was officially announced to proceed for the notification sent to the council on August seventeen. Uh, today, the contractor is on the schedule, uh, clear and grabbing is complete. Uh, they have moved with the Russian control, uh, systems that it has to be in place, and we're looking forward to continue working with all utility companies that are working very diligently to relocate their, their utilities. Uh, the con, uh, spend structure, uh, uh, will be ordered and approved very soon. And as soon as all utilities are in place, uh, the contractor will follow with, uh, placing in, in, so the, uh, the con spend. Just a, a quick summary of what this con spend does for the city. It is a, a quick installation process that will allow us the u, utilization.
Is he there?
Think, I think we, we may have lost him due to technical difficulties, but, um, I think he was just going through the actual process. Um, and again, you do have the quick installation process first. They will be reconstructing that culvert and making it usable and accessible, um, for all city residents. I believe the projected end date is January of two thousand and twenty-one. Um, the procurement activities are currently in process. I think that the council is aware that G dot has provided us some additional funding, um, that has helped us jumpstart the project. And so they are also assisting in the coordination of appropriate vendors to deliver the service. We expect that to be, uh, started this week, um, completed, uh, by the end of September, and we'll be moving the project forward beginning, uh, in October, once all of those, uh, activities are in place. And so, um, again, we're looking for that completion to be done in, uh, January of two thousand and twenty-one because we are on schedule, and there's a little bit of, uh, I guess cushion, uh, set in there so that we're not caught behind the eight ball.
Okay.
So I can answer any general questions. I think most of the information is in the, uh, memorandum that I provided about a week ago, and Madam Clerk, I, I know that you have it. I don't know if, um, you're able to put it on screen, but I think that might also be helpful for the edification of the public.
Okay, uh, just let me say, and I'm sure that Dr. Rao understands too, and that is that we were given, we were given a, uh, a, uh, timeline for completion before, and I do understand, uh, a lot of things happened, in, in, including COVID nineteen. However, I'm not crazy to know that things are going to happen this go around, but I would hope that something would happen as I send it out to, to people in the city. Uh, letting them know if it does happen, we hope that we will not be down for more than twenty-four hours. Would you, would you say that's a safe prediction?
Absolutely, Mayor. So you see at the top of this document, it's got my signature on it, and so that means I'm, you know, kind of standing behind the information that I provided you. And so this is a, uh, construction schedule for your records and for the records of the public. Of course, there's some things that, you know, we don't have complete control over, but we've already, before we even released this information, identified the project management. So, you know, that's done by, uh, I think it's One Atlas, uh, and then we've got the construction inspections, um, by Jacobs. And so we are on track. Um, you have this tentative star, uh, this tentative schedule, and I apologize, I actually misspoke. I said by the end of, uh, January, but it's actually by January one, um, it should, the install should be complete. And so I apologize for misspeaking, but we are on track, definitely thankful for our partners, um, from G dot for supplementing, uh, us close to half a million dollars, because as you know, the biggest delay was the not having the resources available to, uh, implement the project. Now that has been resolved, and I'm confident that we'll deliver this project, just as we have those others that we have funding for.
I'm sure the people in District One would be appreciative of that, not only just District One, but all of us, uh, having to take that detour to get where we want to go. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, next item? Madam Clerk?
Next item is council discussion on Cannon Ridge at Wolf Creek subdivision road closure. City manager.
Yeah, Mayor, this one, um, does require some technical information, um, from, uh, Mr. Valenzuela, and so he's working to get back on. Um, I would ask that we kind of move this one towards.
I will hold it until he can get back on.
I'm sorry, he is, I just got a notification he is on, and so, um, for this item, I think he's worked very closely with, um, council member, um, Gums and the community over there, um, to ensure that we meet the needs of our residents. And so, uh, I'll defer to Mr. Valenzuela to chime in, and, and I'm certain that, um, Councilmember Gums may have some key insights from her diligent work on this subject.
Okay, Mr. Valenzuela?
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Um, very, um, briefly going over to what Public Works has done on the request that we received on the Cannon Ridge at Wolf Creek subdivision. Uh, the initial request, uh, fronted us was to do a traffic calving. At that point, uh, Public Works proceeded with, uh, the proper documentation and tra, uh, and traffic analysis, and provided back to the community the traffic findings. Uh, the, uh, the Cannon Ridge subdivision did meet the requirements for a traffic calving. Uh, the speeding on the area was potentially higher of the eighty-five percentile, as well as the volume of vehicles was also higher of what it was requested under the ordinance. So having to consideration those primary items in accordance of the, uh, traffic calving ordinance and, uh, moving into the road closure. Uh, the community, uh, wanted to have a road closure, and at that point, we switched from the, uh, traffic calving, uh, ordinance into the road closure resolution and applied the guidelines, uh, for the, uh, road closure resolution. At that point, what the road closure, uh, resolution, uh, required from other work was uh, an initial, uh, citizen request, an engineering study which was conducted, and speeding problem, uh, identification, which what we were, we identified, uh, the speeding issues as well as the significant volume that we e- encounter at that location. Uh, at that point, we got to, uh, provide additional information and consult with our partners, uh, um, that we had to work with, uh, at the city of South Fulton. We consulted with, uh, with P D, we consulted with fire, we consulted with the post, uh, with the post office as well as, uh, the school system. Uh, those, uh, consultations made, uh, the fire department provided their input indicating that it would require, if a road closure was permitted, permitted at a designated lane on specific diameters so their vehicles can go through if the road closure was to be called aside. And then, uh, the post closure, um, had their thoughts on opposing on, on the road closure, and subsequently. And subsequently, uh, uh, we had a scheduled, uh, hearing with the community. At that public hearing with the community, we only presented the factuals of what we learned through this process and heard only what the community had to say at, at that particular location. At that particular, uh, public hearing. Uh, at that meeting, uh, we have heard from the summit at Stonewall Tale, the Cannon Ridge, uh, residents and some residents from Britton Park. On the memo, uh, provided to the council, and we have done our, uh, part providing the most up-to-date information and discl- uh, disclaim everything that we have learned on the um, the results of a hundred and sixty valid votes, uh, were that twenty-eight from Cannon Ridge, uh, and they, they were in favor, uh, three from the Summit of Stonewall Tale in favor and five which were orders. Uh, it is, uh, valid to note that, uh, the Britton Park has two hundred and ten rooftops of residents. The Summit of Stonewall Tale has five hundred residents and the Cannon Ridge only has, uh, thirty-seven residents at this point. Now, with that said, we went back in, into the, uh, subsequent analysis and providing to you all what will do this if you close or if you don't close. Cur- currently, the Cannon Ridge subdivision has two exits. The Summit of Stonewall Tale has three, and the Britton Park has two. Should you decide to close the, uh, the requested item for, by Cannon Ridge, it drops one pretty much to each of those entrances. With that, um, that is the summary of the public engagement provided and discussed with the Cannon Ridge and, and others. Uh, at this point, uh, our, uh, public works, uh, uh, disclaiming all the, uh, detailed work done is in front of you. And, uh, in accordance of the order, uh, of the resolution to, uh, close the road. Uh, the considerations under subsection seven of the resolution adheres to the guidelines performed by Public Works. Uh, Public Works advertised and held a public hearing. Public Works Department requests Mayor and Council to take action on the petition on the road closure of Jackon Lane requested for Cannon Ridge.
Now, Mr. Val-
Corner, corner order, corner order, Mayor.
Got it, Ms. Willis. Ms. Valenzuela, if you would just hold one second. Um, uh, Madam Clerk, there was, uh, a little bit of issue in sharing his memorandum to the, uh, residents via the YouTube. And so if you could do a screen share just so they could see, um, one, the results of the survey uh, as well as Mr. Valenzuela. And Mayor, if you, if you don't mind, if you would just allow him to go over that last portion, which I believe was fa- um, page two on the memorandum that will allow people to, Mr. Valenzuela, if you could just mention, one, the process very briefly again, um, while they get a chance to look at the outcomes from the survey uh, for the edification of the public.
Before you go, Mr. Valenzuela, Ms. Bi- Ms. Willis, where's your point of order?
My point of order was that there were, um, residents complaining that they could not see the uh, presentation slide with all of the results from, um, residents and what he was speaking to. So I was trying to put a note up to let you all know. And, um, that was my-
That's as large as I can get it.
It's also in the agenda packet, um, Mayor, for all those online, um, so they can also view it, um, there in real time as well. Apologies for interrupting there, but I know we've gotten a lot of uh, you know, pings about that, both in our chat and online.
Well, thank you, Ms. Willis, for bringing it up. Uh, so what, go ahead, Mr. Valenzuela.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, let me summarize, um, the best way that I can feasible do. Under the ori- under the resolution of the road closure, there was an initial request for, uh, uh, for a traffic calming. The engineering study was conducted. We found that there's speeding problems on Cannon Ridge as well as uh, above the, uh, additional vehicles going through the Cannon Ridge subdivision. So the studies indicating those ci- uh, those items that are part of the resolution.
Great.
As far as does the, uh, road qualifies for road closure, in order to fulfill those, uh, items, we got to consult with the post closure, with the school system, uh, with the fire department as well as with CDRA. We have made those consultations, met with them, receiving writing their thoughts on what, uh, they thought about this petition. And, uh, fire requested, uh, certain diameters for the, uh, cul-de-sacs. If they had to put a cul-de-sac, uh, the post closure had their thoughts on that, uh, they will have issues with, uh, an area, uh, if I'm not mistaken, it's the zip code three zero three three one that will that will be impacted for, uh, for delivery services. And subsequently to that, I just wanted to note to you all that each of the subdivisions, it's not like, uh, it's uneven for each subdivision number of residents. Uh, it will be, I think, fair to note that the Britton Park has two hundred and ten, uh, rooftops. The Summit of Stonewall Tale has five hundred rooftops and the Cannon Ridge subdivision has thirty-seven, uh, ru- rooftops. Um, should we proceed to close, uh, the, uh, uh, Jackon Lane, what it will do to those subdivisions, you will reduce by one entrance to their locations. At the end, uh, of the, what Public Works requesting in accordance of the resolution is that applying, uh, uh, section two point one, the implementation consideration, sub- subsection seven of the resolution adheres to the guidelines performed by Pu- by the Public Works Department. Uh, Public Works advertised and held a public hearing. The Public Works Department requests Mayor and Council to take action on the petition of the road closure of Jackon Lane requested from Cannon Ridge.
Okay, so I'm understanding you've done all that you're supposed to do, right?
Yes, sir.
And it came back favorable. It sounds like a slam dunk to me. Uh, 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 Councilwoman G- uh, Gums?
Hello and, uh, good evening. And thank you, um, Mr. Valenzuela. I, I just want to kind of clear up just a few things if I can just take a moment. When I, when I came in office, this has been going on for about maybe two and a half years. Of course, the residents have complained about the traffic and the speeding. Um, and then we developed the traffic calming measures, um, because we did not have that in place. We adopted a policy from Fulton County and made it work for the city of South Fulton. Of course, they have gone through this process, um, before because before we became a city, they were attempting to have it closed off as well. And I believe, Mr. Valenzuela, you may have been a part of that um, initial, uh, anticipation of having it closed. But there has been two traffic studies done that was conducted by the city. One that was done in two thousand and eighteen um, that was completed during the school year. And Public Works wanted to verify if there was excessive traffic that was school-related. And then another one was completed in July of twenty nineteen when school was not in session and it still showed the excessive volume of speed and, um, people going above the speed limit. I think it's important to note that there are over two thousand cars that come through Jackon and Button lanes per day. That's excessive. Um, of course, they have had car accidents and you've all received this in emails. Car accidents from residents that may have lived in Waterford Commons. Um, we've had people cutting through, um, from all of the other subdivisions. And of course, Brittany Park does not have a exit, um, that comes, that is connected to, um, Kane and Ridge. Their exit connects them to Stone, the Summit of Stonewall Tale. I mean, yeah, the Summit of Stonewall Tale. So I did want to share that. So they still have two exits. Their exit does not come out of Bunty or Jackon and Lane. Um, and another thing too is that I had a call just last Friday from a resident frantic because she almost was hit by a speeding car. I have also, just recently, ridden out in the community and I was doing the speed limit. A black BMW came right around me and went the opposite way around the, uh, roundabout to go into the Summit of Stonewall Tale. So the issues of speed, vehicular speed, um, impacting the quality of life, I don't think this is fabricated. And I've gone through this process of watching and how we were going to manage this. It is inequitable because of the number of houses that sit in the Summit of Stonewall Tale and then also in um, Brittany Park. There is slated, all of the Canons are one way in and one way out. So for it to, for these residents to feel safe, um, I, I just cannot have it on my conscience if something happens. And I have monitored this for the past two and a half years. This is not an expense that the city will take on. Um, the builder will close the cul-de-sacs, so there's no expenses that the city will incur. I've heard from all of the residents and the majority of them are complaining about the inconvenience. And I get it. I, I definitely get it. But as we continue to grow as a community, then the, it will continue to be a, a problem. But the traffic like that is coming to Stonewall Tale and Camden Road will also help alleviate some of that. Um, so we have to be very strategic about how we're growing our communities, but this right here from all of the residents that I've heard and even some from the Summit of Stonewall Tale that are in favor of it. I just cannot have it personally on my conscience to know that somebody was either killed from car speeding. And again, like I said, I just witnessed it the other day. So for me, I think that we do need to find a way to, um, be able to live, walk and complain. They're not trying to close the community off. Um, they are, they want it to be open, um, so people can walk through with their families and things of that nature. But as far as the double cul-de-sac, that is something that they're trying to do to alleviate the excessive traffic that is coming through their neighborhood. And the children can walk outside and play as well. So I just wanted to kind of clear up some of the, the misconceptions. I know a lot of my colleagues have received um, numerous emails and I, and I definitely thank you for your per- for your, um, your patience in this matter, but this has been an ongoing issue for the past two and a half years since being in office. And we need to find some type of resolution to make this work.
Well, thank you, uh, Councilmember Gums. I'm sure your people in District Two will welcome the fact that, uh, we will bring some closure to this problem. Uh, we'll, we'll hear from Councilwoman Willis and we'll move on.
Oh, I just have one question. Are we voting on this at the next regular council meeting? We're just discussing this today, right?
Yes.
Okay, so you're gonna, you all have a, a recommendation or, um, we ready to vote on this on the twenty-second?
That is the plan.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, thank you all so much. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Next item on the agenda is council discussion on increased transfer of leave hours between employees. City manager.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, I think we've had an opportunity to talk about this. This is, uh, the, I believe, an excellent opportunity to support, um, our public safety staff in particular. And before we turn it over to HR, I would just like to kind of recognize um, the valiant efforts of being responsive to the needs of our staff by both our HR, uh, well, not just both, but by our HR leaders, uh, the CFO or City Treasurer's Office as well as our, uh, interim fire chief and our chief of police. Uh, we have identified as a new city, um, some of the policies that we adapted. I think uh, Councilmember Gums eloquently, uh, highlighted that we adopted some things from Fulton County that, you know, may not necessarily work for the city. And being in our infancy, we will often need to revisit those. Well, the, uh, fire union or the fire, uh, service, uh, organized, uh, uh, and I, I get the name wrong. I like to say union, but I guess we're not officially a, a union yet, but uh, fire leadership brought to our attention, um, some challenges in the work schedule that could make us more efficient. And our, uh, police also brought these items forward. And these were line staff members um, who thought, uh, and found some ways for the city to be more effective, potentially save us money and allow our, uh, department heads to better, uh, manage. And so um, led by the Fire Employee Association, um, our leadership, again, led by Human Resources and the City Treasurer's Office have worked together to bring forward a solution to uh, best support the city. And we're excited to present that to you today. And so with that, uh, what does she say? Our award-winning, uh, HR department uh, will present this proposed policy that we hope to have on the September twenty-second agenda. Ms. Henderson?
Yes, sir. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Donald. Uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and Honorable City Council and Quilla Henderson, Director of Human Resources. Want to thank you for your time this evening as we go through, uh, several policy enhancements that Mr. Donald, um, has already stated have been vetted through the HR department, his office, the CFO Treasurer's office, um, as well as our public safety partners in police and fire. So I'm waiting for the presentation to be loaded.
And while you wait on that, I apologize, the appropriate term is employee association. Um, uh, brought that forward. So I want to make sure I use the right term.
Uh, and Quilla, I didn't get a presentation.
Yep. Ms. Chris will forward it to you again. We, we sent it, uh, actually before the last, um, uh, meeting that we had, um, and it wasn't included on that because it was a regular meeting. If you stand by for about one minute, uh, Ms. Chris will resend it to you now.
Uh, I missed it all, Ms. White. I did see it included in the packet, so-
Okay.
But we, we'll resend it.
What page do you want me to start on? Cause all I got is the number.
Looks, something like thirty-six.
Thirty seconds. Ms. Chris, just forward it to you again directly.
I'm sorry, I got it.
Mayor Procham?
There you go.
Mayor Procham?
Yes, sir.
Would you take over immediately?
Okay.
Okay, Janelle, uh, I'm full of-
Okay, next slide, uh, Ms. White. Uh, so really quick, uh, as an overview of the presentation today, it, the recommendation is to enhance, uh, three policies related to, uh, time away from work, which is transfer of leave be- the specific, specifically the transfer of leave between employees. Um, the work week, work period and pay period uh, for our sworn law enforcement and fire protection employees and the policy related to overtime and compensatory time. Next slide, please. So the first policy, uh, revision or enhancement is the transfer of leave between employees. And this is HR policy three twenty-five dash eighteen, time away from work. And it reviews, uh, specifically the transfer of leave that is donated between employees. Currently, the policy limits the transfer of hours, uh, which are leave donations to a maximum of six weeks per calendar year. There is no cap, um, related to how much time employee can transfer to an employee uh, themselves as long as they keep eighty hours of time on the books. But this request is to remove the maximum of transfer hours a recipient may receive. Um, again, upon, upon reviewing the practices and policies of other departments and to further extend the city's commitment to quality employee benefits and incentives, we do recommend that we remove the limit and allow employees to donate additional leave time and potentially keep employees that are away on, um, uh, on a medical leave, keep them from going into a leave without pay status, which results in a loss of income. Revising this policy will eliminate the need for shift substitutions. And that's currently a practice, um, that the fire department follows, uh, that they, they, for example, if an employee in the fire rescue department, they were utilizing shift substitutions where they volunteered and donated work shifts who are critically injured, um, or critically ill colleague. And so upon researching the intent and the, the definition for shift, shift, uh, shift substitutions by the Department of Labor standards, that practice, while it was thoughtful and generous, it just did not comply with the regulations, um, from that governing body. So allowing employees to donate leave between each other, it definitely, um, supports an incentive- It definitely, um, supports an incentive on behalf of the city. That allows employees to donate leave, uh, between each other, offers greater flex, greater flexibilities to employees. So that they can assist their colleagues during their medical time of need. Uh, definitely reduces stress, stress and encourages our employees to focus on their recovery. There is no additional cost impact to the city. Removing the restrictions can actually, um, reduce the accounting accruals for compensable leave categories. Um, so I know that the memo that the city manager included in this presentation really went into greater detail. As to the impact of, um, cost to the city, which there are none. Again, this is a leave transfer, a leave donation, uh, system that is set up between employees to donate leave to each other. Next slide, please. So the next policy enhancement is the public safety work period change. And, um, in a taluses, I have direct language from the FLAs that, that talks about the seven K exemption. Which allows, um, employees that are engaged in fire protection or law enforcement. To be set up on what's called a work period basis. And that work period basis can be anywhere from seven to twenty-eight days. In our current policy, we've adopted a twenty-eight day schedule. While the city has a standard bi-weekly pay period, which is a, a fourteen day work cycle. This revision is being requested to better align with the city's adopted pay schedule. So we would be going from a twenty-eight day cycle to a fourteen day, um, I'm sorry, a twenty-eight day work period. To a fourteen day work period for both police and fire. And so the average hours worked for police is eighty-six hours, uh, in a fourteen day work period. And a hundred and six hours for the fire department. This will also allow our payroll, the payroll division of the finance department. To, um, definitely process more evenly distributed checks based on the hours that they work. So that work period, again, it just specifies the time when a, uh, employee is eligible to begin accruing comp time. After they have met that work period, uh, threshold. Next slide, please. The HR policy revision or enhancement to the comp time accrual. Again, this is in accordance with the, um, seven K exemption and the FLSA regulations for law enforcement, fire protection. Um, as well as other local, um, government employees. So we're looking at currently, the policy has the maximum comp time accrual at a hundred and twenty hours. And upon consulting with, uh, finance, uh, the best recommendation is to utilize the maximum accrual. That is allowed by the regulation, which would give us four hundred and eighty hours of comp time maximum. For firing law, law enforcement personnel and implement a two hundred and forty compensatory accrual maximum. For all other government employees. And so some of the highlights from there is definitely to allow effective management of hours worked in excess of their scheduled work hours. And we definitely want our supervisors to practice diligence with ensuring that employees do not accumulate time. Beyond the maximum, um, which would require the city to begin paying out cash overtime. And so for that particular section, I do want to state that the city manager has directed, um, monthly meetings between the departments. Uh, coordinated by the finance department to review the budgets and to also provide him with a monthly report every thirty days. To show the comp time accrual for the departments, just as a, uh, an additional nudge to the departments. To ensure that they are allowing the employees the time off when, when staffing levels permit, so that those comp time accruals stay low. Um, another benefit of raising the comp time accrual, it permits more discretionary time to reduce the leave. And this is, again, is the primary reason for increasing from where we currently are at a hundred and twenty hours. To four hundred and eighty hours for fire and police and two forty for all other local government employees. Um, yeah, and so we, we do have a policy, uh, currently adopted. That does require our, require our employees to utilize comp time before they expend any other, uh, category, leave category. Outside of sick, of course. Next slide, please. So these next couple of slides really just go through the actual policies and what's being updated. So we have the original policy language listed and then in blue, we have the updated language. And so really quick, um, for HR Policy three twenty-five dash eighteen, time away from work. Specifically, the transfer of leave between employees. We are recommending that that original policy that reads transfer of hours is limited to six weeks per calendar year. Change, updating that to read transfer of hours is unlimited. Just for statistical information, we typically do not have employees, employees are eligible for, uh, FMLA. When they're out for medically related reason for ninety days, three months. After that three months, we have, um, extended not beyond three month, another three months for a total of a hundred and eighty days. After a hundred and eighty days of medical illness, the employee is eligible for long-term disability. And so at that time, the employee, um, could be eligible for LTD. And then they're forwarded to our third-party administrator for that consideration. So that is why the transfer of leave between employees, removing that restriction is definitely, um, not a cost impact to the city. But it is a value add and an advantage for our employees to be able to assist each other in their time of need. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is, um, a wordy slide, but I won't read everything. This goes over the work week, work period and pay period changes. Um, specifically to sworn law enforcement and fire protection employees. And so everything in the original policy language that refers to the twenty-eight day work period. Is being changed in the updated to the fourteen day work period. So again, the highlight of this original policy to the updated is just changing the work period from twenty-eight days to fourteen days. And again, averaging those hours for police at eighty-six hours in a fourteen day period. And one hundred and six hours in a fourteen day period for fire. Next slide, please. The, uh, policy revisions for the overtime and compensatory time. Again, changing the two twelve hours in a twenty-eight day work period for fire. And one hundred and sixty-eight hours in a twenty-eight day work period for police. To one hundred and six hours in a fourteen day work period and eighty-six hours in a fourteen day work period for police. The accruing co- um, compensatory time, original language, where it talks about that hundred and twenty hour maximum. We are updating that again to comply with the seven K exemptions of FLSA to four hundred and eighty hours. For our law enforcement, fire protection, and then establishing a two hundred and forty hour comp accrual. For other local government employees. Next slide, please. All right, this slide, again, um, it just talks about the paying out of compensatory time. Currently, uh, again, the policy lists a hundred and twenty hours maximum. And then anything over that maximum, uh, is paid out in cash overtime. And, uh, separation of employment, of course. And then a change in an employee's classification resulting in a decrease or an increase in compensation. We are updating that to, um, include language about separation of employment. I'm sorry, paying out compensatory time at separation of employment. And again, if there's a change affecting their compensation. I believe that's the last slide. Yep, last slide. Um, any questions or comments? I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question. I'm gonna go on a queue first.
Mayor Protem, I, I don't know if you remember, I think the mayor, um, handed it off to you, um.
Is he, is he back? I can't see the queue.
I know he was muted, so I, I think he might be, um, I think he might be, uh, awaiting you to manage the.
Okay, uh, in the queue is Councilmember Colleen and Councilmember Willis, in that order.
Okay. All right, Councilwoman Colleen.
Hi, thank you so much. Um, I really just wanted to first say thank you to our employees. I am. I, I'm, I'm overwhelmed at, you know, the way that they have been, uh, sharing resources, uh, you know, sharing their time. With their coworkers. So I just wanted to say thank you to the employees for that. And for being patient with us as we figured out this, uh, solution. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Willis?
Um, yes, I know that, um, some of the public safety personnel. Um, because our accrual time was so low, a lot of them found themselves in situations. Who are losing, um, accrual time or not, you know, not losing it, but not able to use it. And so would this fix this situation, um, Mrs. Henderson?
Uh, good evening, Councilwoman Willis. We are definitely hopeful that the plan that we have in place with raising that comp time accrual. Will allow for management of being able to allow employees to take time off. So that is definitely, um, a, a goal and objective that the city manager has put forth to the fire. And police chief to ensure that with this increase, they are effectively managing their, um, staffing. So that employees can't take time off and they're not, um, reaching that accrual maximum.
Yeah, but I think it's important to chime in that, you know, the, the treasurer's office is also gonna play a important role in this. And making sure that we have monthly comp time reports, um, that allow them to manage this. And ensure people not only don't lose time and, and, and all of that. But also that we can manage and completely control overtime, especially during this timeframe. So Councilmember Willis, I am very confident that we'll be able to do so. And probably for the most part, because our, uh, employee association, um, our union, our police. Um, and our frontline staff have come up with this solution. So yes, ma'am, we are confident that it will resolve any of those potential issues.
Well, I want to say thank you to the employees for bringing, for raising this concern. If you don't close milestones, get fed. And, um, you spoke up and, um, and I want to thank you, Ms. Henderson and Mr. Donald for taking this head on and bringing a resolve to the situation. Um, you know, there, we've dealt with unforeseen circumstances because of the pandemic, COVID nineteen. And, um, our public safety officers have put in some, um, long hours. Some of them, especially when some people have had to go out for various reasons. And so, um, I, I'm glad this is a resolve for them and, um, I'm pretty sure they're appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Um, do want to give thanks to Mr. Malazi and the finance team as well. As, um, Police Chief Meadows and, uh, interim chief Sterling Jones for their assistance. And, um, helping coordinate these efforts through the city manager's office as well.
Right, thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any other, um, people?
Oh, well, I, I was in the queue, I'm sorry. I was, just wanted to follow up with sentiments, ma- I'm out of that time, madam.
One second, I just need to know if you're next. Madam Clerk, is there any other council members in the queue?
Councilmember Reeves.
Yes, thank you so much. Chair, would you recognize me?
Yep, proceed, Councilmember.
Thank you so much. And so, yes, after, uh, attending roll calls. And, uh, uh, having a close relationship with our public safety, as I believe in a safe and clean city. Uh, this is exactly what they wanted. And, uh, a, a big tremendous, uh, five star to all of the staff who worked on this and getting this done. In a collaborative effort, uh, because our, our first responders is who we should look after first. And again, thank you. So I just shared a sentiments with my other colleagues.
Thank you, Councilmember Reeves. All right, if there are no further comments. Madam Clerk, can you say on the next item?
Next item is council discussion on COVID nineteen. Emergency order, city manager.
Yeah, so this one is, is very, um, short and simple. I just wanted to highlight and, and I'll defer a little bit to, um, the, uh, city attorney. But, um, uh, Governor Kemp extended the, uh, emergency order. Which does allow us to continue to operate virtually and, and things of that nature. But I know that the council has a mask order and some other innovative things that you have attempted to put into place. Um, to ensure that our residents are safe and that our businesses are able to operate within COVID nineteen guidelines. Um, but one trend that I have noticed is that the executive orders are peeling back. Uh, are not including certain protections or, or actually restrictions against the protections that you have put in place. With that being said, um, it means that you will likely have to, uh, re-implement some of those things. So, um, the status of the mask requirement is something that you want to look at. Um, in addition to that, I think there were some, uh, coordination on the number of people. That can be in one place or requirements on business, et cetera, et cetera. And so while his order has changed quite a few, uh, different parameters. And it no longer restricts cities from implementing their own COVID nineteen guidelines. Um, without the city taking action, based on the opinion of the city attorney, which I provided you. Uh, almost, let's say, three weeks ago, um, it is likely time that we revisit those. In advance of the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So that you can ensure that all of the mandates or any mandates that you may want to remove. Um, are done so, uh, prior to, um, any of his, uh, emergency orders. Uh, actually not having that, those teeth in it anymore. And so again, just a, a reminder and a refresher on those items, so that you can be sure to look at them moving forward.
We have in the queue, Councilmember Willis and Councilmember Colleen.
Councilmember Willis?
Thank you for recognizing me, I'm chairwoman. Um, Mayor Elwes and I, Mr. Donald have, uh, Mayor Elwes and Councilmember Gums and I are already working on the updated. Uh, uh, mask order as to what the governor has now extended. And so we plan to bring that back before council, at the next council meeting. The, can you give us a little, um, information on evictions? Um, because I think people are confused, um, with how the eviction process work. Um, you know, for some people, some people are thinking that we can stop evictions. And some people are thinking that evictions have been stopped by the CDC, um, order. By way of the President of United States and, um, it is not the case. Um, people are being evicted. And, um, can you please explain, um, what's going on with evictions? As a result of the nineteen?
Yeah, I can give you some, some insights on that, of course. Um, I'll defer to our, um, city attorney to provide some of those technical insights. But the federal government, well, I think I'll start with just the county, um, has allowed, um, the eviction process. To move forward. Um, there was an emergency order that has been coordinated by the CDC. Um, but at first glance, it only impacts a certain, um, portion, uh, of the community. And so here locally, uh, within the county, most evictions are allowed to move forward. And that is done outside of the general, um, jurisdiction of the city of South Fulton. Wherein sometimes our officers, um, will be called in, uh, once an eviction has, has taken place. Or, uh, there have been different activities that are coordinated. But the bulk of those activities don't actually happen or coordinated directly through, um, our offices. And, you know, I would say with many of these, uh, emergency orders that come from the federal government. I'll be careful to, you know, remain nonpartisan when discussing that stuff. But, um, the federal government, uh, often releases information that is, you know, very generalized. And you've got to peel the covers back to understand what is truly occurring, whether it be the increased, um, uh, unemployment insurance benefits. Where states were not really given the full amount of money, only about, uh, twenty, I think it's, I'm sorry, seventy-five percent of those funds. But they have to kick in twenty-five percent where most, especially here in Georgia, our unemployment insurance fund. Um, is no longer considered solvent. When you look at, um, the actual protections that were put in place for, um, the. The, uh, evictions, they were not actually covered for all evictions. And so those challenges on the surface appear like they're in support of those activities. But once you peel the covers back, they, they don't actually apply. And so I wouldn't talk about individual evictions. I would just talk about in general how they are coordinated and I will defer to the city attorney. I would just talk about in general how they are coordinated and I will defer to the city attorney to add any additional color or insight to that.
Okay, so no, I definitely don't want to talk about any individual evictions because they are happening um by the hundreds every day. Um they're happening, you know, so we don't want to talk about any individual. I'm just talking in general because evictions are happening. Uh so let me ask the question to the attorney. Uh city attorney, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, councilwoman.
So isn't it true that the eviction process is handled by the magistrate court in Fulton County?
Yes, that's absolutely correct, councilwoman. The ability to evict is a state law. And the authority to facilitate that process is authority that's granted to magistrate um and state court judges. So our municipal court judge would not even have the authority to evict anyone, even if if she was requested. It's just not an an authority that's. Given locally at that level. So the city has no ability to stop any eviction or to tell any magistrate or state court judge, look, you can't move forward.
So isn't it true that if a person convicted most of the time, well, not most of the time. They are typically evicted by a marshal department and they act upon a court order?
Yeah, typically um you are not allowed to evict unless you have a court order and um. One of the reasons being is that you can incur substantial damages if you unlawfully evict someone. So to make sure that, you know, you're actually evicting someone under authority that you have under the under the law. You go through a special pro- excuse me, you go through a special eviction process before a judge. You get that order, the judge makes a determination that based on the information you provided me, um you have the right to evict. Uh and then the sheriff's department, a lot of times the orders will authorize the sheriff's department to go out and assist. So it's just a process. It's it's a steps step by step process that's done in combination with the magistrate court, the sheriff's office. And the person who is requesting for the eviction to be facilitated.
Thank you, Attorney Walker. My last follow-up question goes to Keith, um Chief Keith Meadows. Chief Meadows.
Yes, councilwoman, how are you?
I'm good, I'm great. Um please explain at what point does our South Fulton Police Department get involved with evictions?
It's mostly when it's of a criminal nature. For instance, if the sheriff's department or the marshals have come out and executed. Um um executing an eviction and let's say someone comes back to the property. Uh they don't have a right to be there at that point, or or if they damage property, it becomes uh more of a criminal nature. And that's usually when uh the police department is called in to to help um resolve that particular issue.
Thank you, Chief Meadows. Last question for you is, isn't it true that our police officers do not evict or effectuate evictions on behalf of the magistrate court?
No, that's that's typically done by the sheriff's department or the or the uh Fulton County Marshal.
Thank you, I E O chairwoman.
Thank you, uh Councilwoman Willis. Uh Councilman Colleen.
Hi, um. We are talking about the the executive order. Uh I do just want to let people know, though, if they are watching um. That there is supposed to be a marshal or a sheriff on site uh when you are evicted and um. Individual landlords cannot evict you without them being present. If you feel that you are being evicted unfairly, you can contact the Atlanta Housing Justice League. Uh if you're having any problems with your landlord, you can contact the Atlanta Housing Justice League. Uh there they have uh pro bono lawyers on hand to help you out. Their phone number is four zero four. Nine four six nine nine five three. Again, that number is four zero four. Nine four six nine nine five three. There were, there was some comments, um Madam Attorney, about the about the CDC order. How how does that order affect anything that is happening now in South Fulton?
So basically, uh Councilman, I I can give you a general gist of the order. And it's, so it basically says that through December thirty-first, which is the remainder of the year. That there's a certain process that residents can go through. That will basically give them an exemption from the eviction processes. So that process would include, you can go to the CDC's website and there is a declaration form. And in that form, um you would establish either you've suffered a financial hardship such as a loss of job, um cessation of unemployment benefits. You would basically complete the form, you would give it to the required party established by the CDC. And then after you go through that process, it would give you a defense through the eviction process through the remainder of the year. So it's it's basically just a step by step process that's set up by the CDC.
Thank you. Um I I know that there are probably some residents who needed to hear that. The back to this emergency order, so is it now the case, I know that there was some confusion. Earlier on with Governor Kemp's previous orders where the assumption was that he established a floor. And that we could add uh restrictions above that floor. So for example, if his floor is that uh parties of fifty people or more cannot gather. We could lower that to twenty people or more, but we couldn't raise it to one hundred people or more. Is that? Do I, am I understanding that correctly? What what are we allowed to do beyond the current executive order that the governor has?
Yeah, I think earlier the issue was that he actually established the ceiling, which is where the questions came from. And now I think he has simply established the floor. Again, I'll defer to the city attorney, but the concerns that I was expressing to the council is that initially. Um he had issued the the non-mask mandate, basically saying that. Cities could not implement their own mandates. That has, in the most recent order, um been repealed. I think also maybe even more importantly is that his order covers um our ability. To, as long as he has the emergency order in place, then we are able to operate remotely. And coordinate our services in the way that we have. But if his order were to expire or. Be reduced in force in some manner, and again, that's. Um I agree with the city attorney's written opinion that she provided to the council that, you know, those uh items are something you want to pay very close attention to. Because as soon as they would be removed, you could not effectuate business in the way that you have. And so. Um again, now that you can legally implement a mask mandate and other mandates that you have considered in the past. Um it is imperative to actually put those on the books and and hope that they remain. Madam Attorney, I defer to you. I hope I did not uh misspeak or or inappropriately um introduce that information. I think you're muted, by the way, Ms. Walker.
Okay, thanks. Sorry about that. Thank you. So that that's correct. The governor's orders do establish a ceiling. Um but they also establish the threshold too. Like, for example, if the governor says that fifty people can't meet, then you still locally couldn't go below that. So you can't go, so even if you introduce something locally that said, well, you know what? Um actually, you can do this. I mean, the so the governor has basically said that if you do anything that's outside of his order. It's illegal. So you can make it a local violation to, you can take some of his provisions and say it's a local violation to. Do X and then give a penalty for it, fine them, put them through the municipal court. You just can't go beyond his order. Now, what the city manager was referring to was that the governor recently, um some of the cities took the position that. The mask mandates were not going beyond the governor's order. They were more of just supplementing the governor's order. Um the governor, obviously, everyone's aware that he rejected that interpretation. He didn't sue every city. But he sued the city of Atlanta, who was just one of several cities who were who was taking that position. Um so the result of that is the governor has since, that litigation has concluded and he's since, he's since expanded. His emergency order to allow ci- cities the limited ability to have mask mandates. And when I say limited. Um I mean that you can do it on city property, you can make it a violation if people don't adhere to it on city property and penalize. Um park property, anything that's owned by the city, and that you can also enforce it. On private properties such as businesses, restaurants, as long as the business consents. So like, for example, if you have a grocery store um or a gas station or whatnot, as long as they consent. You can make it a penalty, you can make it a crime within South Fulton to not wear a mask on that particular property. You just have to. Have the consent of the owner if it's private. So there's certain limitations that. That you have, but you do have more flexibility now by the governor.
And so I I would just like to drill down uh for a moment. Gatherings. And and I'm sorry, I cannot pull up this 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 uh document from a month ago, but. Can you tell me where the governor's executive order stands now for the amount of people that are allowed to gather?
My understanding is that it's still at fifty.
Okay.
You can have fifty people, as long as they're able, up to fifty people, as long as they're able to. Safely socially distance within six feet of each other.
So so if we if we were, a- and I bring this up because I know that like Labor Day weekend, Fourth of July weekend, we have. Um Indigenous Peoples' Day coming up and uh Halloween coming up. For us to just think about how we are going to handle. Uh those days because people have been home home for a while. I'm not suggesting that we do one thing or another. But um I do know that people have been having like these gatherings at their house and sometimes there are more than fifty people there. And so uh I think that that's something that that we need to look at. Um that's it.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim, there's no one else in the queue.
All right.
I'm back.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor Pro Tim. Great job. Uh next item, please.
The next item is council discussion on CARES Act funding.
Okay, I'm going to give you a brief overview of where we as mayors. And I say mayors, I mean all fourteen of the mayors uh in the in Fulton County. And feel free, Madam Attorney, to jump in anywhere you think you need to. Also, Mr. I feel that you should do the same. Uh you all know that the uh. That the government issued or allocated over four point one billion dollars for the purposes of care. Uh to the state of Georgia. And of course, a lot of that money was was uh a lot of fifty fifty percent of those funds. Were local governments. However, you had to be at least a population of five hundred thousand or better. Well, if I'm mistaken, uh Mr. Mr. Donald, I think not about thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two cities in the country. Uh met that requirement, am I correct?
Yeah, I think it's it's a little closer to forty, but you you you're pretty close.
Okay, so here's, the way it is written. There was really no, technically, there was really no obligation for the county. To extend money down to the cities. The county's position at that time was, we don't have to give you anything because it doesn't provide for us to give it anything. Well, after a long conversation and letters going back and forth, the county decided to give us. I think two point four million, am I correct, Mr. Donald?
Yes, sir.
There's two point four million, which is about twenty-five dollars per person. When you look at other municipalities who award over a hundred dollars uh per person. Of course, we rejected that of. Uh one of the things we wanted to know is, we wanted a complete accounting of what the county has spent. Of that one hundred and four million dollars and not only have spent, but have encumbered. At this time, we never got that. Uh of course, you know, the CARES funding, we got some short time right now. If you don't use the CARES funding money, it goes back to. The federal government. So what we're asking now is, we rejected that. So the county came back. After a lot of conversation, a lot of pressure, they came back and decided. That they will give us more money, but here's where it will come from. They spent two million dollars on test, four million dollars on testing. They saying, okay, we won't do that test again, test anymore. We'll give you the four million dollars and you go ahead and buy what you need. The other part was PPE. We'll give you, that's five million dollars. We'll give you the five million dollars. You get your own, secure your own PPE. Now, one of the problems with that is, the county gets a better price on PPE because we are than we do. But they never said anything about that. And thirdly, it was five million dollars to walk community relief. And that was to uh have training on digital skills. Because we lost a lot in the hotel motel business and we want to go back and try to retrain those. That was five million dollars. What the what the mayor said on that one was, well, you're not going to make us look crazy. By turning away. Training that people could be made aware of. So right now, where we are. Well, we're back, really back where we started from with the mayor. Here's what the county says.
Remember, Mayor, they responded, but this evening, um an update to that has been provided.
There's an update to what we said from Mayor Barker, right?
Yep, that's correct, yes, sir.
Yeah, that's, I knew by that one.
Okay.
Uh we, I, that's one I can't, I'll wait till we get in the uh executive session to talk about.
Got it, okay.
All right, uh so here's here's what the county responds to. In terms of transparency. They're saying they will publish CARES Act funding, use and distribution on open government platform. They will attempt to obtain recipient service level data from nonprofits. Uh and the board board of health. That's important because a lot of the money that they that they dispersed. It went to uh nonprofits and the board of health, and we need to know how they're using that money. They provide, they will provide periodic uh updates on all of this. Secondly, in terms of coordination. Uh they plan monthly or quarterly meetings. Uh on COVID responses, transit, water and sewer. They will continue inclusive of all cities in weekly incident command coordination and stakeholder calls from A- from AFCMA. Add city managers to a twice a week area command coalition. Uh with them. Lastly, on limitation on spending, the county will continue to rely on advice from council regarding eligibility. Defensibility of cost and seek identification from the cities. So our options, reduce testing budget, reduce PPE budget. And reduce the community relief budget. Now, here's another big problem. Atlanta, being over four hu- five hundred thousand people, has its own. Money that was given directly to them, a direct allocation. But we know. The mayors know that some Atlanta people have gotten services. In our cities. We believe that Atlanta double dips. So we ask that they identify and reimburse those funds. Back to the pot that can be dispersed to the cities. That's a general overview. Did I leave anything out, Mr. Donald?
No, I I just think, I mean, I know you're being very polite um on it, but I would just say that. They shouldn't get credit for doing what they're supposed to do. And um the the cities have requested that we get direct. And I'm usually cautious when I say this kind of stuff, but. I just think that they they need to step up to the plate and provide us the ability. To deliver services directly to our residents and get out of the way. Um and that the proposal initially that they provided to the mayors. I think all of the city managers, when we have met and talked. the city managers, when we have met and talked, you know, is just, it's not enough and it's not appropriate. And the restrictions that they have put on the money, I think I have provided an update to the council that I hope made it extremely clear that the actual rules related to the CARES Act, you know, provide us great flexibility and the ability to be innovative in how we deliver service to our residents. And I feel like they are choking the life out of that innovation and it hampers cities like the city of South Fulton. And so I am hopeful that the mayors stand strong and that our council members, I know the city of South Fulton Council is definitely going to remain and be vocal and ensure our residents get everything they're supposed to. But I just think it's important for everybody to be on record saying that what they're offering and what they're proposing ain't enough.
Well, and you're correct. The reason why I'm being a little bit uh genuine to them is that we know that this is going to wind up possibly in a legal matter. Uh, there is, once we get into executive session, I will share with you the final demands from all fourteen mayors as we can discuss as we go forward. Madam Attorney, you want to add anything?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Mr. Uh, Donald?
No, I will I will um hold my venom for executive session.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, Council Councilmember Willis is in the queue.
Councilmember Willis, go right ahead.
I mean, I just want for the record, and I want residents to know that one of the main reasons why cities need this um CARES Act funding is to do exactly what Atlanta is doing. Um, and they have created, they have essentially created a eviction program um to help residents who are in um are in the in are in the uh in the process of being evicted or who have been laid off and can't pay their bills. And so um that's the main reason. I wish that if Fulton County had not given this money to the cities, at least I wish they would have created a eviction uh program uh similar to the city of Atlanta. We have a lot of residents who are hurting uh throughout the county. And uh again, it was stated the eviction process did not stop. And so we have a lot of people getting evicted. We have a lot of children that's going to be impacted. We have a lot of seniors that's going to be impacted. And at least if they didn't want to give the money to the cities, they could have created a Fulton County-wide eviction program to help people who are in jeopardy of losing their homes or losing their safe havens.
Very well said. I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Colley?
All right, thank you. I I wanted to just ask, do we know if any money has been allocated to Fulton County schools?
Mr. Colley, that's what we're asking for as a team of mayors. We're asking for a total accountability of all funds that have been spent.
Because I just want to say that's that is that is a concern for me. I know that we started back um pre-K through second grade this week with uh some special needs and some school teachers have reached out to me and said, you know, that they really need masks for these kids. So I just want to make sure that we're keeping our kids safe.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Well, thank you all so much. We'll talk a little bit more about this in the executive session. Madam Clerk?
The next item and the last item on the agenda is council discussion on the twenty-twenty census, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you know, time is of the essence right now. But first, let me thank my my co-chairs, Councilwoman Gump and Councilwoman Willis, because we've been charged with the task of getting the word out and trying to hit that eighty percent mark uh or get as close as we can during this time. So what I'm going to do now, I'm going to ask my co-chairs to chime in and talk about some of the things that we're doing. So uh Ms. Willis and Ms. Gump, go right ahead.
Well, uh, we we are asking um our colleagues to, at this point, we're asking for all hands on deck. Um, we have gotten the data back from our Census Bureau on the low response in low count areas. South Fulton is right now at sixty percent. We got until September thirtieth to get our count up as high as we can get it. Um, just to put it in perspective, in two thousand and ten, we came in at sixty-four percent and we have eighty and we were counted at eighty-eight thousand residents and we know we have well over a hundred thousand residents. And so as we discussed earlier, transportation projects, you know, all of that funding is going to be contingent and informed by the census. And so at this point, we are doing a motorcade this weekend in some of the low count areas. We're going to do some of the pop-ups uh and bringing ice cream trucks. Uh, Friday, I'm going into one of my low count areas that was on the list and take school supplies and ice cream truck. Um, and we're asking uh all hands on deck at this point. Find out, and it's not about districts, it's about the low count areas. And so, you know, I don't want everybody to say, well, you're not coming in my district. You're not coming in my district. We got our information from the Census Bureau. They have given us the low count areas. And so our focus is to hit those areas hard between now and September thirtieth. Um, and I'll yield to uh Councilmember Gump.
Um, what I want to do is just really, you know, echo your comments. It is very important for us not to leave any money on the table um in regards to the census. And we do need all hands on deck, not just from the council members, but also from community members as well, reaching out to your neighbors, joining forces with us to make sure that when we get to September thirtieth, that we have met the threshold where we're able to get these the funds available for our census. So we're asking that all residents participate, even if you've already completed the census, just bring someone along that may not have or educate someone um and do it in a safe, social distancing manner. But we will be hosting activities throughout the entire city to make sure that uh we do our best effort to reach our our goal. So we're just asking you to join us. And again, we will wake you up on Saturday morning with loud horns and a big old motor brigade, but that's what we're going to do to try to get people aware of what's happening with our census and we need you. So that's all I have to share. And Mayor, you can kind of close it out.
Uh, we also need to mention the fact that this Sunday is census Sunday.
Yes.
I have met with the mayor's council, the mayor's faith-based committee to talk about what they can do this Sunday to get people to register. One of the things I said is they do before they do their their sermons, just take ten minutes and just stop and say, everybody, just right now, call this number and register for your census. Any little things help. So we've got several, some of our some of our faith-based people are having, still having people come inside to go to church, some of them having church in the parking lot. But the pastors will wear their little census shirts this Sunday and they will all be pushing uh us to go and to go and register for this census. We raised it three months where we're at fifty-eight percent. Am I correct, uh, co-chairs? We raised it three months. We were we we hung around fifty-eight percent and never made any progress. We finally got the sense, I got the sixty. So it's a big push. Now, last, let me say about the caravan. Mr. Donald?
Yes, sir.
I would like, so that people know who we are and what we're doing, I would like to have any any council person who's going to be on that caravan uh have have be exposed to a pool car.
Okay.
With the Fulton County insignias on the side of it.
New city of South Fulton?
Yeah, city of South Fulton, insignia on the side of it uh for this weekend. So they're part of, they'll be a part of this uh of this whole thing and people know exactly who we are because I'm talking with the police and the fire that, you know, they're going to be a part of the caravan. Uh, I would I would say to all of y'all, uh, come out, man, join us. Councilpeople, please join us and let's get out and create some excitement and uh have people to 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 really register for this census. Is there anything else?
Mayor Protim?
No, it's just that uh the council members who have uh apartment complexes who are on the low response list, and you could check with Gary, he has all that information and my assistant, Lashandra, um, you uh if you can go into these communities and safely set up an event, um, that will really help. I mean, you can tell people to respond to the census for ice cream or whatever, you know, we have committed to uh buying two thousand dollars worth of uh Kona Ice. And so the community I'm going into Friday is a small community. There will be some credits on the um on that truck. So we just need you all to put your uh go into these low, find out where your low count communities in and and do whatever it takes to get people to respond because sixty is, we're the highest in the region, but at sixty is still not a good number for us to be counted. We need an an account of eighty, at least eighty.
Right. Uh, Mr. Man, you about to say something?
No, I think uh Councilmember Willis touched on it. I would just say, um, you know, depending on what actions the council members take, I think Mr. Left, which already forwarded you the plan and the activities uh that are uh being coordinated by staff on behalf of mayor and council. Um, but if uh folks are going to participate in the parade, um, normally you would go through uh Mr. Valenzuela to reserve and have access to a pool car. I would just ask that you forward that information this time directly to Ms. Chris, copy and Mr. Coleman, so that we can also ensure that um vehicles are properly cleaned and and serviced um before and after because that, you know, definitely makes makes a difference. And um while we are on the hook for being reimbursed through Fulton County, we want to make sure we're able to document that and coordinate appropriately. So if you would just ensure that those two folks, even if you're sending it directly to me, please ensure that they're copied and that'll help us prepare appropriately.
Mr. Donald, I just want to remind you, we did pass legislation that two of the pool cars assigned to the city council and we support, we're supposed to work with a clerk. So she needs to be she needs to be copied on it too.
For this one, though, is because it's eight of y'all, we would be, the mayor asked that all that all folks have access to a vehicle so you can social distance and all of that good stuff. So we would deviate from that um practice just for this one-off activity so that we can make sure they're clean before and after and that we're documenting the uh funding so that we can be reimbursed.
Understood.
Okay. Any other any other questions or ideas? Okay, uh, Madam Clerk?
That ends today's council work session.
Mayor, I entertain, I would like to uh move that we go into executive session to to discuss. Well, well, it's almost seven o'clock and so do we need to move that we extend this meeting for an hour for executive session so we can discuss personnel, real estate, and litigation?
Whatever your motion is.
I move that we extend this work session for an hour.
A work session?
That's what this, I mean, extend, um, what a work session is supposed to end at seven. We have three hours, right? Was I wrong?
Yes. Uh, we're, I'm here, it's um, we have, I think, until nine-thirty before the Zoom will end.
Okay. Well, I would like to entertain a motion, uh, I mean, I would like to move that we go into executive session for real estate, personnel, and litigation. Again, uh, the mayor did say he has some litigation items to discuss with us.
Is this, is this, is there a second? Oh, you gave, okay. Second, uh, in discussion?
I have discussion, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do have two points of order. The first is the agenda lists a discussion about citywide sanitation service. So is that not have?
From the agenda.
Okay.
We were moved.
Okay, that's all right.
And my my second question is that we did actually resolve our resolution that work sessions would end by seven PM. So if we are going to extend past seven PM, we would have to uh make a motion to extend the session.
I don't think we're going to, what time is it now?
Seven oh five.
I don't think we have to extend it. I mean.
I think you do, Mayor, because if if it is till if the work sessions were made by resolution to end at seven, I think you would, you may want to check with the um city attorney, but I believe you do have to make a motion to extend past that time if you codified it.
It was not a resolution, it was just a vote.
Oh, got it. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't recall, I'm with Ms. White. I don't recall any formal resolution.
Okay. All right.
And we've gone beyond uh seven o'clock uh one other meeting.
Okay, let's go into executive session, Ms. Ms. Uh.
We got to vote, Mayor.
Did you vote? I'm sorry. Let's vote, please. Madam Clerk, go ahead.
Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gump?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard? Councilmember Gilyard? Councilmember Reeves?
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Gilyard. Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Motion approved. Everybody receive a breakout box message.
Yes.
Councilmember Gilyard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, did we make any decisions back that we need to bring forth in the in this meeting?
Not that I am aware of, Mayor.
And not that I'm aware of. Okay, good, good, good. Having none, I accept the motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Properly move the second in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
South Fulton forever.